Do you want me to open? Matt, Susan, Matt, take a.
Okay, good job.
No, you can.
So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 14 Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the township clerk's office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Mitut Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Carina.
Present.
Okay. Good. Okay. So, the first thing on our conference agenda tonight is a proclamation supporting the Click It or Ticket mobilization. So, for supporting Click It or Ticket, whereas there were 565 motor vehicle fatalities in New Jersey last year, 2018, a large percentage of the motor vehicle occupants killed in traffic crashes were not wearing a seatbelt. The use of a seatbelt remains the most effective way to avoid death or serious injury in motor vehicle crash. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration estimates that 135,000 lives were saved by safety belt usage nationally between 1975 and 2000. The state of New Jersey will participate in the nationwide Click It or Ticket seatbelt mobilization from May 20 through June 2, 2019, in an effort to raise awareness and increase seatbelt usage through a combination of high-visibility enforcement and public education. The Division of Highway Traffic Safety has set a goal of increasing the seatbelt usage rate in the state from the current level of 94.5% to 95.5%. And further increase the seatbelt usage in New Jersey will save lives on our roadways. So, on behalf of the mayor and the township council, we do hereby proclaim the township's support, the Click It or Ticket seatbelt mobilization, both locally and nationally, from May 12 through June 2, but I would say all year, oh, every day, and pledge to increase awareness of the mobilization and the benefits of seatbelt use. Mike, on behalf of the township?
So, basically, everybody's going to be seeing this probably throughout the state and throughout the nation. You see signs everywhere. Basically, there's strategic enforcement to get people to comply with the seatbelt laws. I can tell you, in my experience of 22 years, there's nothing like going to an accident and expecting the worst, find out people wearing seatbelts, and see that they survived. It's also unfortunate that, for me, one of the worst things that you'll ever have to do is go tell a loved one that they've lost somebody. So, I encourage everybody to wear seatbelts. It really does save lives, and you see the difference every day. Thank you.
Something, I just spoke to the chief a little while ago because the police department was also on the news just the other day with, only because I'm involved in the Operation Hope program about drug addiction and seeking treatment for individuals. And I asked the chief just to say a few words because of the new test strips that were, right, first introduced in Pennsylvania and now here in West Orange.
Say anymore, I won't have anything left to say. Thank you. Yes, we've put in our lobby and in the police substations fentanyl test strips. If you know anybody that has a substance abuse problem, they're available to them. What they do is they mix the substance they have with a little bit of water, and they can test that to see if there's fentanyl present because most, very large percentage of people are overdosing and fatally overdosing, for the most part. There's been fentanyl, you know, probably better than 90% of the mixture, so it's not just heroin anymore. If this person comes into the lobby or into police substations, we also have Operation Hope that the council president mentioned. So, you know, there is help available. We can get them into a detox. We can get them to long-term recovery. There's methods to dispose of drugs. We have, we just purchased, we're outside with fentanyl because it's even airborne, it's deadly to, you know, the police officers, people in the building. So, we have a special receptacle for that, and we have another one inside that you can even just put your normal, not over the counter, but your prescriptions in, your unused prescriptions, unwanted, that's for anybody. You know, you come in, you have some painkillers from an injury you had to your back, and you just don't want them in the medicine chest because you don't want people getting in the wrong hands, just bring them in, and you can dispose of them here, there's no questions asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And I'm just really pleased that the police department has expanded the prescription-drug drop-off. It used to just be in April and October, and now it's all year. And I think I want to say something about the Badlani Foundation also because of their advocacy for safety and traffic and how they continue to inspire students at the high school. They just created a mural. They did a program also where you just paint your fingernail red so that remind you to keep your hands on the steering wheel. They just have great ideas coming out of high school to inform and educate the students, and they get it. So, thank you. So, next on our agenda is the Metavivers of New Jersey, recognizing May as National Cancer Research Month, National Women's Health Week, May 12 through the 19th. Tammy Eagle Bowlin. Here we go. Deborah Eagle Feinberg, everyone, and Sherry Feinberg Stern. So, this evening, we have a proclamation. The Township of West Orange recognizes the founding of Metavivers of New Jersey, a chapter of Metaviver Research and Support, an active response to stage IV metastatic breast cancer May 2019 is National Cancer Research Month. May 12 through the 19th is National Women's Health Week. Breast cancer is the most common type of cancer among women in the United States, secondly leading cause of death. Every year, approximately 1 in 8 women, or 12% are diagnosed with breast cancer. In 2019, an estimated 268,600 American women will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, 62,930 women with pre-invasive breast cancer. 41,760 women will die in the United States in 2019 from stage IV metastatic breast cancer, equivalent to 115 women a day. They are either among the 3% to 6% of women initially diagnosed with de novo, stage IV, or 30% who evolved to stage IV from earlier stages. Cancer has no cure. Life expectancy is 18 to 36 months from diagnosis due to the disease cells spreading to other organs such as the brain, liver, and bones. Early detection of this disease, as with most, is essential. The National Metaviver Organization educates the public about metastatic breast cancer and lacking of funds for stage IV treatment. They aim to dramatically increase the current percentage of overall breast cancer research dollars from under 5% to 30% for the already metastasized patient. The national campaign for this initiative on social media falls under "Don't Ignore Stage IV." Whereas, New Jersey resident Tammy Eagle Bowlin is an advocate for metastatic breast cancer research institutions and a mentor to diagnose patients. She founded the Metavivers of New Jersey Facebook group in April 2019, decentralized metastatic breast cancer information, action, and advocacy relevant to New Jersey communities. The pink ribbon is well-known for representing fight against breast cancer. The metastatic breast cancer awareness ribbons color also include teal and green. The ribbon is designed to highlight the uniqueness of the disease and show its commonality with other stage IV cancers. Green represents the triumph of spring over winter, life over death, renewal, hope, and immortality. Teal portrays healing and spirituality. The thin pink overlay signifies that the cancer originated in the breast. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Township of West Orange proclaims that Metavivers of New Jersey, a chapter of Metaviver Research and Support, began only last month, April 2019. Citizens are encouraged to join the national effort towards awareness and metastatic breast cancer during May's National Women's Health Week and National Cancer Research. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Robert Parisi and our town council, present this proclamation as a sincere token of our best wishes.
Yeah, so, thank you so much for this proclamation. See, I have to lower this a little bit. So, about four years ago, at the age of 41, I was diagnosed with breast cancer out of the blue after doing a boot camp class just through my routine annual mammogram. And I initially thought that it was stage II, but after some further testing, they realized that I was one of those de novo, stage IV cases off the bat, which made the disease incurable. And when this happened to me, I had no idea what the word metastatic even meant, and I learned it's when it spreads from the primary organ to different areas of the body. And I decided that I was going to turn my energy into advocating and educating. A very close friend of mine, a Met sister, passed away in April, 35-years-old, with a three-year-old daughter, and it's because of her and in her memory and her honor that I founded Metavivers of New Jersey on Facebook. It is a local chapter of the national organization Metaviver Breast Cancer Research and Support. And it's because so many friends and family have said to me, what can we do? How can we help? And with a terminal illness, you know, there really isn't that much, but just to show that you care and that you want to be informed. And so, that's what the group is for, family, friends, and patients, to advocate and stay informed and, you know, be in this together. So, another thing that I'm doing is working on legislation for the state of New Jersey. Senator Ruiz and Senator Greenstein co-sponsored a bill that was passed by the Senate. I was in the Senate floor yesterday pushing the green voting button, which is great. So, it was for a breast cancer awareness and research license plate, and it has gone to the Assembly now, and hopefully it will pass the Assembly next month, and then it will be a program that will be available for everyone to purchase and raise funds in the state of New Jersey. So, if you can just take away, there was a lot of facts in that proclamation, but I think the main point is that even though that people are diagnosed stage I, II, or III, early-stage breast cancer, 30% of those women will become stage IV. And that is why the statistic of having only 5% of breast cancer research funds going to stage IV treatment just doesn't make sense. So, we're trying to urge people that that becomes 30% of breast cancer research for treatment of metastatic disease, the only kind that kills. Thank you for being here.
Tammy, if there's anything we can do to help with the legislation?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for covering for me tonight, Council President. I'd just like to say one thing, my entire gratitude for the resolution and for people who support cancer research. And just for a topical note, my sister, two years ago, was diagnosed with stage IV lung cancer, and due to the tremendous research and infusion therapy and diagnostic work, today, my sister is afraid. So, we should all be appreciative that we need to do continual cancer.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
So, is he on the train still? I think Sherry's stuck on a train. That's the only reason why I'm filling in this evening when he gets here. So, we have one more proclamation. This is also very serious about food allergy awareness week. So, we welcome Nicole Ruffo. Michelle has a proclamation.
Nicole, how you doing? Hey, guys. Thanks for coming in tonight. So, this week as well, with another form awareness, food allergy awareness week, this week, May 12 to the 18th. I know at the school district, food allergies are taken very seriously. I know you're forming a committee to add to the health and wellness in the school district. So, we thank you for coming down and for your advocacy. I'd like to read this proclamation to you that we have for you this evening. Whereas many, as 32 million Americans have food allergies, nearly 6 million are children under the age of 18. Whereas, research shows that the prevalence of food allergy is increasing among children and adults. Whereas, 8 foods cause the majority of all food allergy reactions in the U.S., shellfish, fish, milk, eggs, tree nuts, peanuts, soy, and wheat. Symptoms of a food allergy reaction can range from mild to severe, such as anaphylaxis. Whereas, anaphylaxis is a serious allergenic reaction that is rapid in onset and may cause death. Whereas, food allergy results in more than 200,000 emergency department visits each year. Reactions typically occur when an individual anonymously eats a food containing an ingredient to which they are allergic. Whereas, the number of food allergy reactions requiring emergency treatment is up sharply over the past decade, with a 377% rise in insurance claim lines with diagnoses of anaphylactic food reactions between 2007 and 2016. Whereas, food allergy research and education, known as FAIR, is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of life and the health of individuals with food allergies and to provide them with hope through the promise of new treatments. Now, therefore, from the mayor, I, Robert D. Parisi, mayor of the Township of West Orange, New Jersey, do hereby proclaim that May 12 to 18, 2019, Food Allergy Awareness Week in the Township of West Orange as a special week, and encourage the residents of the Township of West Orange to increase their understanding and awareness of food allergies and anaphylaxis. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I wanted to thank the mayor and the town council for being just wonderful when I wrote them about this proclamation. The responses that I got were really positive and affirming of the work that we're doing. I'm here on behalf of my family and then many other West Orange families who are suffering with life-threatening food allergies. I'll just tell you real quick, my personal story of how I was kind of forced into this advocacy. I had a one-year-old and a three-year-old, two boys at that point, and they had never really wanted to eat peanut butter, so I just kind of didn't force it upon them. But then, my husband and I had gone to his in-law's lake house, and my husband was eating the pretzels that are filled with peanut butter. And so, I thought, ooh, let's sneak some peanut butter into them. Let's try it out, because at some point, they're supposed to have it, right? And I'd always joked to myself previously that the first time I'm going to give my child peanut butter will be in an emergency room parking lot, because then you're in a perfect place where if anything happens, you're close, right? Well, I didn't listen to my advice, and my first son had it, was like, not interested, didn't like it. But my second son, who was at that point about 20 months old, just started changing in his body. He started to cough and choke and throw up, and his voice was not able to speak, his breath changed, everything changed. Luckily, I had been a schoolteacher in Westfield, New Jersey, where I had been educated on how to care for food allergic children. I do believe that saved my son's life because immediately I knew we had to call 911. So, we called 911, and at that point, in this country area, the first responder was a fire truck. And a fire truck there does not carry epinephrine, so he was doing oxygen on my son, and he was radioing dispatcher to get there immediately because it was a very bad situation. I could hear it in his voice. So, thankfully, the ambulance arrived in what felt like forever and administered epinephrine. We went to the hospital and were observed, and my son is okay. But this has forced me into this work. I also have, and my twin daughters also have, food allergies. So, three out of four puts you in a pretty high ratio. I'm here because the children of West Orange and adults now are becoming more allergic at a higher rate. And the facts of allergies you heard in the proclamation, 32 million Americans suffering with food allergies, 1 in 13, and I think they're bringing it actually now to 1 in 12 children, are suffering with life-threatening food allergies. So, you're talking two per classroom, which is a very high number of children in a school. And my son, when I mentioned that to him, he said, in our family, it's three out of four. I was like, yeah, I guess it's not so great here. So, I just wanted to share a little bit about, there's a lot of food allergy awareness out there, but I'm wearing these red sneakers, you can see maybe, in honor of this boy named Oakley. And Oakley died about two years ago from a life-threatening food allergic reaction. His family was not taught the correct steps, that when you're having a reaction, you need to have the epinephrine administered, and they watched their child perish in front of them because they did not administer epinephrine. And they are trying to spread the word of how important it is to make sure that everyone has access to epinephrine, and it's very important that all first responders are trained in epinephrine administration and also have it with them. So, the quick kind of Oakley food allergy awareness says, number one, this is for children, to show respect for your friend's allergy, and that's really important, washing your hands after eating. So, you mentioned the top eight allergens. If you eat any top eight allergens, just wash your hands after you eat. It doesn't hurt, right? Because wherever you go, if you touch something, then you won't be spreading any allergens on a playground, on a train, wherever you go. Don't share your food with people who have allergies. Get help right away. Show kindness. These are all really wonderful examples of how we can treat our food allergic friends and family members. So, thank you so much for this really important acknowledgement of this week, and there's a lot going on out there to bring awareness and education.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Everybody come up. I'm happy. All for my perfect. All right. I like your ribbons, too.
Really? Wow. That's wild.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, everybody.
How are you? Yeah. Come in. Come in. I want you to make them come up there.
Yeah.
Want to go up there, Jim?
Have this spread out here.
Good job, Karen.
Everybody look at Karen. All right, everybody look at me. I know it's tough.
Thank you. Thanks, Nicole. Thank you. Nicole, thank you very much for that presentation and raising awareness. Really, as an educator myself for over 30 years, this is one of the scariest things when you're working with children. So, it's not just for one week. Yes, you're raising awareness, but this is something just like Click, wearing a seatbelt. It's every day of your life, not just during one week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is an update on redevelopment.
Update on redevelopment. Everything's going well, as usual. Last I, last information I got was there are 138 leases and 103 residents at this point in time. I don't know if you've been down there, but they planted a lot of trees and everything around the building. It really looks very nice, what they've been doing on the outside. I had a conversation with Mr. Diaz yesterday, and the stage II is not completed yet, but they are working on that. And Mr. Lepore has done some work with them also. And as you see tonight on the agenda, Resolution 133 is authorizing the release of the performance bond posted by DGP. So, that's where we're at.
So, we have been having stakeholder meetings. So, the next time you speak to Gene Diaz or even Steve Terrell, we were thinking, would it be possible for, during the street fair, if we can request using the parking deck for parking, if space is available, for people to park there on June 1st?
Yeah. I'll ask them. I'll give them a call tomorrow.
That would be really handy. Thanks.
How many spaces you looking to use, do you know?
All of them.
Why not? You're going to be able to use all of them, because the people who live there have to use them.
As many as they would be willing to.
To give up. Okay. I will check on that for you.
Thank you.
You've got it.
Any other questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Sares. That's very helpful. I just wanted to ask you, the township's records indicate that DGP is delinquent on its May 2019 property taxes. I don't know whether you still call them property taxes. Do you know anything about that?
I am not aware of that.
Perhaps you could check?
I'll check it tomorrow.
We've cut their taxes by over 75%.
I will check it out tomorrow.
Okay. And just, would you please let the council know your findings?
Sure.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, while their taxes have gone down 75%, the pilot payment that they pay far exceeds that. So, just to.
Balance.
So, that just, I'm sorry, could I just ask a question? So, are they current on their pilot payment?
Yes.
And just not on their?
Yeah, well, it's not, it isn't, right now, it's not built on the same cycle. Probably starting next year, we'll do a quarterly, but this year, we're doing it every six months.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? No? Council liaison announcements, anyone?
None for me.
Council President?
Yes? Council President?
Thank you. Can I give my council liaison or somebody else ahead of me?
Go right ahead.
Go for it.
Well, I doubt you're going to be able to use all, because the people who live there have to use.
As many as they would be willing to.
To give up. Okay. I will check on that.
Thank you.
You've got it.
Any other questions?
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Sares, that's very helpful. I just wanted to ask you, the township's records indicate that DGP is delinquent on its May 2019 property taxes. I don't know whether you still call them property taxes. Do you know anything about that?
I am not aware of that.
Perhaps you could check?
I'll check it tomorrow.
We've cut their taxes by over 75 percent.
I will check it out tomorrow.
Okay. And just, would you please let the council know your findings?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, while their taxes have gone down 75 percent, the pilot payment that they pay far exceeds that, so just to.
Balance.
So that just, I'm sorry, could I just ask a question? So are they current on their pilot payment and just not on their?
Yeah, well, it's not, it isn't, right now it's not built on the same cycle. Probably starting next year, we'll do a quarterly, but this year we're doing it every six months.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council liaison announcements, anyone?
None for me.
Council President?
Yes, Council President?
Thank you. Can I give my council liaison or somebody else ahead of me?
Go right ahead.
Go for it.
Okay. First of all, we had a very successful West Orange pedestrian safety advisory board meeting. A lot of things are moving forward. Hopefully, we'll get our final thing on the road diet from Mr. Lepore. The youth advisory board students are doing tremendous work at the high school, informing their fellow student about safety, injuries, traffic issues, and driving habits. Also, we have a scheduled walk audit, which I thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, for participating at Redwood School, which is continuing our safety schools program with Easy Ride and the Livingston Y. So I'm very appreciative to everybody itself, Lori Caffetter, Boss Moskowitz, Velski, and the others who have participated. Also, our next pedestrian safety meeting is being moved, and I hope everybody, it June 1st, I hope everybody will attend. Other than that, everything is going well with pedestrian safety, and also, Mr. Lepore is assisting us in the elimination, probable elimination of two parking spots in front of Burger King on Pleasant Valley Way, to make it a safer egress and entries, and exit from Burger King. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President? Councilwoman?
Sure. I like to, I attended the other evening, the opening at Rock Spring Golf Club. It was a nice event. Weather could have been a little bit warmer, but that was okay. But thank you to the administration and to Kemper Sports for a nice time. I think well over 400 residents attended the opening of the course, and folks were walking all around the property, got to visit the building, and Kemper was on-site to answer any questions that folks may have. So it was a nice event, and it was so great to see the outstanding community support for the project. So we look forward to a wonderful golf season, if the weather, again, the weather needs to cooperate with this a little bit. But they're booking up, and you could, if you'd like to have a round of golf, you could go right on the township website, and there's also on the Facebook page, and you could book a tee time. So please come out and have a round of golf at the new West Orange Rock Spring Golf Club. On May 23rd, from our social and senior services department, they're presenting Salute to Seniors Luncheon at Mayfair Farms from 11:30 to 3:00 p.m. So anyone interested in that, you could either go to the website or call our senior service department, Laura Van Dyke, at 973-325-4105. A lot of other senior events this spring, Zumba Yoga Aerobics, they continued Bingo, that was a big hit this winter, so Bingo is on Mondays from 11:00 to at the Toby Cat Civic Center. So please go on the website and check out all the activities, and we're looking for, moving forward to see what other activities that we could provide our residents. And last but not least, I just want to thank everyone who came out to the Friends of the West Orange Public Library Berry Plant and Book Sale last weekend. It was, again, the weather wasn't so cooperative, but a lot of folks came out and purchased a lot of books and bought plants for Mother's Day, so we thank you for all who came out. Maybe, Councilman, you know, being the treasurer there, how well we did with the sales, but we appreciate the support from the community, and all proceeds go to the West Orange Public Library. Councilwoman?
Yeah, we sold out of all of our plants, so there were probably a lot of happy gardeners and moms for Mother's Day. And I think we netted a little bit over $2,000.
Beautiful.
Very nice.
And just one last plug, I believe at the, at the street fair, we're going to have children's book sale as well, so come visit the, our table at the, for the Friends of the West Orange Public Library for more children's books. Councilwoman?
Thank you. Councilwoman?
I just wanted to briefly acknowledge, because I see Gina Velazquez, my neighbor, and also someone who co-sponsors and organizes a really important fundraiser that we had for PAS, which is the Parents Advocacy for Special Education Services here in West Orange, and it acknowledges a community of students who are sometimes forgotten. At senior awards night, they receive scholarships, because there isn't after high school for them as well. So I want to thank Gina for her hard work on this. I think we raised close to $3,000. We're still accepting donations, and I hope that you can speak on that later in public comment. Thank you.
Very nice. I was one of the founding members of PAS way back when. We created a library for parents, guest speakers, it's a long time ago. So thank you, Gina, for keeping that up and keeping parents informed. There's so much information out there and resources that are not readily available.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead. You want to finish? I just, I have one other thing I'd like Mr. Gross to discuss.
All right, let me, I have plenty to talk about.
Finish what you have.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that came out to the West Orange Chamber of Commerce Annual Community Awards last night. It was at Mayfair Farms, and they were the Business of the Year for their long-term commitment to all things West Orange. The Educator of the Year that was honored is Kimya Jackson at Redwood School. Our Officer was Frank Romeo, Officer of the Year. Firefighter of the Year was Deputy Chief Fred Kingston, and as I said, Mayfair Farms. We had 18 sponsors and almost 150 people in attendance, and it was just a very lovely There are two pages here of things going on at the West Orange Arts Council. Please just visit W O Arts dot org, read all of this for yourself, but I do have to mention this Saturday, May 18th, in line with the new farmer's market happening right across the street, we're going to have Bring Your Own Easel here in Town Hall from 9:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. So if you would like to display your art here in Town Hall on Saturday, May 18th, let us know. The township with the Open Space Commission and the Environmental Commission received a $10,000 grant a few years back, the, with the ANJAC, that's the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions. We, the Environmental Commission had a $1,500 grant where we commissioned a landscape architect to design eight varied gardens up at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I don't remember the year that was purchased, but I think 2013-ish. And so through these gardens, Sustainable Jersey granted the township $10,000 to create a pollinator garden up there. So that, my husband Joe prepared the grant, and with Nick Solis doing a lot of the work up at the site, 577. It's classroom, outdoor classroom space and workshop space, and a lot of other little things along the way. Past couple of years, we've planted over 600 trees, so every day on Earth Day, we try to do more things on those six acres that have been preserved. We were also awarded a New Jersey American Water Grant, $10,000. The plan there is to clear the debris from the orange reservoir behind McLunes, all the way down to Degnum Park, Vincent's Pond, behind the high school. That will be a town-wide community cleanup, and when, after a survey is done to see exactly what has to get done, we would invite the community to come and help. I was going to say in the spring, but it is spring, not winter, but. And also on the planning board, the planning board, I invite everyone, May 28th at 7:30, we will meet here to go over the master plan, executive summary, reexamine, the reexam of our master plan. May 28th, so apparently our council meeting is switched to the 29th, and the planning board is taking that slot on the 28th. The planning board also approved the Executive Drive Redevelopment Plan that was presented to the planning board on May 1st. It was unanimously approved. We have copies available if anybody would like to see that. Okay, Jen?
Councilwoman, I would just like Mr. Gross to speak a little about, about an award that the township got this weekend.
Okay.
From Fairleigh Dickinson University, based on something that Mr. Gross had submitted, so I'd like him to just give you a little dissertation on how that happened and what it was.
Thank you. Yes. This year, Fairleigh Dickinson ran the first municipal innovation summit, and as part of that summit, inviting municipal officials from all over the state, they were also invited applications for awards for innovations that have been initiated or started or completed within a municipality. So I had intended to attend, I intended to attend the summit, but I wasn't able to because I was not well Saturday morning and had to stay close to home. But fortunately, the submission that we sent won the award. And unfortunately, we did have representative, surprisingly, or unbeknownst, also at the attend, at there, Councilwoman Matute Brown was there. And we won a reward for the West Orange Human Capital Management Program. And you're going to say, well, what is that? And basically, you know, it is a program which we're moving from traditional human resource management to human capital management, and that's the use of technology to provide an environment where you not only value employees for where they are right now and what they can perform and what they can do for us, but also to provide the tools necessary to help employees grow. It's a, it's a change in focus from cost center, employees being cost centers, to rather being assets, and as assets, looking forward to their growth and giving them the tools and the, and the environment to do so. So we've been working diligently, you know, since I've been here, working towards becoming, using technology that current ages, and we've made a lot of strides. And, you know, our Kronos Project and others are part of this, and I just was very happy to have received the award and, for the submission, and just want to thank the mayor and council and staff for their support of our technology initiatives over time, and look forward to this going further.
And I'd like to just congratulate Mr. Gross, because he put this whole program together, and as you all know, I am technologically impaired. If it wasn't for him, we would have never won this award, no doubt about that, and I thank him for that.
Thank you. Congratulations. And during our last budget hearing, though, the whole idea of creating that IT team was to streamline and be more efficient, and we're definitely moving in that direction. As the Sustainable Jersey Coordinator, though, you know, we did get points for our property tax credit cards, so if you can send me any of that information, I would like to upload it into our application, which is due June 2nd, so I need it right away. Under the, there are innovative sections of that application.
Sure.
Thank you. Also, I'm the council liaison to the rent a house, and I just happened to see my note here that, more good news, that the rent a house rating from the New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Association gave us an excellent rating. That means that eligible for more things, and permits have been submitted for replacing the front doors at the rent a house.
Great.
More good news. Okay. Mine's clear. You're up.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the township clerk's office on September 26th, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4th, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Carino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Okay, first on our agenda is public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the lectern, name and address.
Tammy Williams, Hillside Avenue, Chairwoman of the Human Relations Commission. So I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow is our Haitian Flag Raisin, and the township is proud to host our flag raisins. And to host the Second Annual Haitian Flag Raisin scheduled for tomorrow, we will also be hosting our Second Annual Indian Flag Raisin scheduled for August, with a Hispanic and Italian flag raising scheduled for the fall. Additionally, though, the process is taking a little longer than hoped for, we are in the process of having a digital light display so that we can light up Town Hall for holidays, special occasions, important monthly celebrations, and recognitions. And of course, we will celebrate Pride Month. We take pride in the diversity of West Orange. Also, I would like to remind everyone that the HRC's next monthly meeting is scheduled for May 24th here in Town Hall, 7:00 p.m. in Room 109. Our next scheduled senior line dancing is also scheduled at the rent a house, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We would like to invite members of the council to join us for that event. So if you guys are available, please feel free to come out and join us with senior line dancing on June 7th. It's a lot of fun. The seniors really look forward to it. We have light refreshments, and '60s and '70s music is what they prefer. They really get down, so. They have a lot of fun. And we just have, we have a lot of fun, and we hope that you all can come out and join us.
Tammy, is that at the CAT Center?
That's at the rent a house.
Rent a house.
Yes. All right, that's all we have, and we look forward to seeing you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. So by now, you all should have received the material that I forwarded to the council, specifically the document received from Mr. Moon, so thank you, Mr. Moon, regarding the 99 pages of social affair permit applications for OSPAC. Before I get into any of that, I just wanted to quote from the State of New Jersey's Local Government Ethics Law, New Jersey Statute NJSA 40A:9-21.1, specifically the enabling clause, and it's going to be hard for me to read, so bear with me. This act shall be known and may be cited as the Local Government Ethics Law. Legislative findings and declaration, this is at 40A:9-22.2. The legislature finds and declares that A, public office and employment are a public trust; B, the vitality and stability of representative democracy depends upon the public's confidence in the integrity of its elected and appointed representatives; C, whenever the public perceives a conflict between the private interests and the public duties of a government officer or employee, that confidence is imperiled; D, governments have the duty both to provide their citizens with standards by which they may determine whether public duties are being faithfully performed, and to appraise their officers and employees of the behavior which is expected of them while conducting their public duties; E, it is the purpose of this act to provide a method of assuring that standards of ethical conduct and financial disclosure requirements for local government officers and employees shall be clear, consistent, uniform in their application, and enforceable on a statewide basis, and to provide local officers or employees with advice and information concerning possible conflicts of interest which might arise in the conduct of their public duties. It's a very long document. It goes on. So I remind you tonight, as you consider an ordinance, that your obligations and duties are not to the administration. They are to the people who elected you to office. And you are accountable to the people who elected you all to office. I've had the opportunity to review the videotapes of many of these council meetings, and I have never seen a time where two of you have voted anything but yes to something presented by this administration. Now, maybe there was a time that slipped by, I don't accuse you of that. I'm just saying that your independent judgment is essential to this township so that we land on solid ground and we stop for once the insider actions that put us in the place we are today, specifically with OSPAC. I am asking you, like I asked you the last time I was here, that you table any ordinance or determination about OSPAC until you vet what happened that lands us in this place today. The resolution that enabled NJAI and then others to run OSPAC exhausted in March of 2018. The entire summer last year, there was no rush to get this thing through. So why in two weeks are you being asked to pass an ordinance, an ordinance that's only revocable? Why are you being asked to force an ordinance through when there's this level of impropriety that is left unchecked? I ask you to table this decision until you know what happened so you can be sure that what you pass will successfully lead OSPAC to a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Joseph Fagan, Public Information Officer. I'd just like to expand a little bit further on the comments of Councilwoman Castellino. This past Thursday, there was a successful opening at the Rock Spring Golf Club. The skies were threatening. It was a little chilly, but the rain did hold off. 400-plus people, maybe more. The overwhelming consensus was everyone was thrilled to be there, and they were thrilled that the golf course was purchased by the town of West Orange. They were enjoying the spectacular views, and they were very satisfied that open space in West Orange had been preserved. Some chose to walk the grounds. There were several families there doing so. It was also attended by various media outlets that gave us great exposure. The New Jersey State Golf Association was there, and the Metropolitan Golf Association from upstate New York drove two hours to come. And in their professional opinion, they were very pleased and expressed great interest that the Rock Spring Golf Course had been preserved. There were brief remarks by Mayor Parisi and the county executive who congratulated Mayor Parisi on a job well done. The ceremonial first drive was held at 7:00 by Nick and Pat Colante. And earlier in the day, Steve Lesnick, the chairman and owner of Kemper Sports, who could not attend the ceremony, in the evening, we met in the morning, and he was thrilled and optimistic and discussed ways to attract golfers, specifically women and minorities. Steve himself was from South Orange, so he was familiar with the Rock Spring. The following day, the course opened for play. There were 55 golfers on Friday and 109 scheduled for Saturday. And of course, Sunday, the weather was ran out. And finally, I'd like to say that on May 22, Seton Hall Prep will be playing West Orange High School at Rock Spring Golf Course. So we're all invited to come out for that.
Wow.
I don't have a time, but I would assume they would be after school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Gary Van Wijk, Burnett Terrace. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I was very upset to hear during last week that a property close to Redwood School was being clear cut. About a dozen fully mature trees were being cut down. I believe the township was called to come and witness this. The police were called. It was too late to save the trees. There were two New Jersey registered companies there performing essentially illegal work. They did not have permits to remove the trees. The homeowners lied that they had permits. They in fact did not have any permits. Our town forester has confirmed that no permits were applied for or issued. So according to our ordinances, fines of up to $2,000 per tree can be levied for these unwarranted removals. And I would like to request the town council to each of you get behind this and ensure that the property owners are duly fined for the removal of these trees. If they can afford $2,000 to remove each tree, they can afford $2,000 for the fines for violating our laws and lying about having permits when they don't have them. And if they can't afford those fines, I think they should go and live somewhere where everything is purely asphalt, and then they don't have to worry about trees. I think that it's very clear that our town ordinances are, first of all, not being complied with, that we do not have sufficient enforcement in town to protect our environment, and that when these incidents happen, it's not just one satisfied homeowner that is at stake, but really, it's the environment of all of us that is at stake and that is actually harmed. It has been shown that these trees enhance the value of everybody's property. So by cutting down all the trees on the corner of a lot, that person is not only harming the value of their own property, but they're impacting the value of the properties all around them. So damage is actually being done to the community. And that's what we really have to finally stand up for and really do something, you know, to protect. And I also think it's time that we make a concerted effort to issue a proper kind of announcement, maybe with our annual tax bills, so that homeowners are duly informed of what our regulations state in relation to trees and what the fines will be if they violate our ordinance. We do know that ignorance of the law is actually no excuse. So there's, you know, no reason not to fine these people, but we really have a crisis of conscience, not only in our town, but much more broadly as a state and a country in terms of where we are in terms of protecting the environment. And that means that we do have a duty to try to inform, teach, and conscientize people that what you do in your environment, whether it's cutting down a tree or throwing plastic in the Rahway River or the reservoir, is not just something that's on you, it's actually on everybody. And we have laws to protect our environment that recognize that fact, that what you do as an individual in relation to the environment doesn't just impact you, it impacts your whole community. So I think it is really time that in West Orange, we start to take concerted actions to protect and preserve our environment and to educate people that they need to do that and when they fail to do it, to fine them, to make them take the consequences. And I implore you here on the council to actually finally do something, because I keep coming up here talking about the same thing, and people are still cutting down trees, and the picture is not changing. So really, it is time, and I hope that you can take some concerted effort now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Gina Velasquez, 22 Coral Circle. I just want to thank Cindy for acknowledging the work for past scholarship. And I just want to mention, too, that we are still accepting donations. We have seven candidates that have already been acknowledged to get an award. So we are accepting donations for the, until the end of this month, May. And Don Wans is willing to, they have said that they are going to give 10% of all that they make on this Thursday, the 16th, and next Thursday, the 23rd. So please, go have dinner, go have lunch at Don Wans', and their, 10% of their proceeds will go to the scholarship fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vivian Demus. I live on Spring Hill Drive. The gentleman who spoke about the trees, I wasn't intending to talk about that, but given what he brought up, it would seem to me that whoever did this knew they were required to get permits and decided that they may not get the permits, so they figured they'd cut down the tree. They knew what the fine would be, and they calculated that into their decision-making. My suggestion would be that the fine is probably not high enough, because if you're willing to eat the fine, it's not high enough. If you're doing wrong and you're willing to eat the fine, the fine is not high enough. And I absolutely agree. Trees are a commodity that take years to get to the point where these trees were apparently cut down. It's an investment of time that is not easily replaced. We need trees. We have rules. Disrespect for the rules inspires more disrespect. Lack of enforcement inspires disrespect. You got to enforce the rules. And I don't know whether there's anybody around that could have called and somebody from the township get out there and say, what the hell do you think you're doing? And stop it? But that's what's got to happen, because apparently people don't care what the rules are. And right now, we live in a climate where the rules don't seem to matter, broadly speaking. West Orange cannot allow that to happen.
Okay, sorry, what happened? Sorry, can you stop the time?
Stop the time.
Karen, is someone okay? Chief, stop the time.
Jimmy, it's me. She keeps taking my pictures and videos of me. It's me, Debbie.
I thought something...
Okay. Gee.
I'm sorry, Ms. Demus. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I'm going to switch, because I've spent enough time on that. And I'm going to say Councilman Joe, because he was upset and mispronouncing my name. I don't really care about that. I'm just going to call you Councilman Joe. I looked on the website, and thank you, I appreciate you being concerned for your concern. I looked on the web...
Ms. Demus, hold, we're going to hold on one minute, find out what's going on.
She just threatened me on video, which is why I'm asking you to intervene. She threatened me while...
My mic left.
Well, the chief's here. No, I'm fine. Okay, sorry.
All right, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
OSPAC. I went on the website today before coming, and I saw Councilman Joe's description of the proposed licensing agreement and some issues with it. It's so poorly written that whoever wrote it didn't understand what they were writing about prurient interest. And I don't know why that's even in there. Are we looking to set up for litigation and costs and fees and now screening content? If that was not a term before, and there has not been some overtly prurient, and that Supreme Court status is, I know it when I see it, that's what it is, okay? And unless there has been some effort to put on that kind of staging, I don't know why you're putting that language into an agreement at all. You're just looking for a fight and money to be spent on legal issues because you're going to block content that you have no business blocking. I do not understand, because I did not compare an old licensing agreement with whatever the other one was with this one, but you're losing oversight, you're giving away oversight. You hire people to do work for you, but you still need to supervise what they're doing and know what they're doing. You cannot just let them run free rein and not have the requirement that, for example, they send the meeting minutes. What is the big deal about doing that? That's just silly. And given what Ms. Bennett said, what I'm hearing is, this is a ram through now. If you could sit on this for months, and there's an investigation about serious concerns about improprieties, why are you ramming through a three-year deal with an automatic give of months afterwards that just prolongs inertia, that keeps the same group doing something because, no disrespect, you guys can't get your act together to hire a new one at the end of three years? What is that about? You know what three years is? You know when the end is coming, and you can time accordingly to intercede. Slow down. This is not a good thing to do if it's under investigation. And given the way this thing was written, you got to look at that, too. So there should be no rush to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments?
Hi, I'm Gina Velasquez, 22 Coral Circle. I just want to thank Cindy for acknowledging the work for past scholarship. And I just want to mention, too, that we are still accepting donations. We have seven candidates that have already been acknowledged to get an award. So we are accepting donations for the, until the end of this month, May. And Don Wans is willing to, they have said that they are going to give 10% of all that they make on this Thursday, the 16th, and next Thursday, the 23rd. So please, go have dinner, go have lunch at Don Wans', and their, 10% of their proceeds will go to the scholarship fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vivian Demus. I live on Spring Hill Drive. The gentleman who spoke about the trees, I wasn't intending to talk about that, but given what he brought up, it would seem to me that whoever did this knew they were required to get permits and decided that they may not get the permits, so they figured they'd cut down the tree. They knew what the fine would be, and they calculated that into their decision-making. My suggestion would be that the fine is probably not high enough, because if you're willing to eat the fine, it's not high enough. If you're doing wrong and you're willing to eat the fine, the fine is not high enough. And I absolutely agree. Trees are a commodity that take years to get to the point where these trees were apparently cut down. It's an investment of time that is not easily replaced. We need trees. We have rules. Disrespect for the rules inspires more disrespect. Lack of enforcement inspires disrespect. You got to enforce the rules. And I don't know whether there's anybody around that could have called and somebody from the township get out there and say, what the hell do you think you're doing? And stop it? But that's what's got to happen, because apparently people don't care what the rules are. And right now, we live in a climate where the rules don't seem to matter, broadly speaking. West Orange cannot allow that to happen.
Okay, sorry, what happened? Can you stop the time?
Stop the time.
Karen, is someone okay? Chief, stop the time.
Jimmy, it's me. She keeps taking my pictures and videos of me. It's me, Debbie.
I thought something...
Okay. Gee.
I'm sorry, Ms. Demus. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I'm going to switch, because I've spent enough time on that. And I'm going to say Councilman Joe, because he was upset and mispronouncing my name. I don't really care about that. I'm just going to call you Councilman Joe. I looked on the website, and thank you, I appreciate you being concerned for your concern. I looked on the web...
Ms. Demus, hold, we're going to hold on one minute, find out what's going on.
She just threatened me on video, which is why I'm asking you to intervene. She threatened me while...
My mic left. Well, the chief's here.
No, I'm fine. Okay, sorry.
All right, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
OSPAC. I went on the website today before coming, and I saw Councilman Joe's description of the proposed licensing agreement and some issues with it. It's so poorly written that whoever wrote it didn't understand what they were writing about prurient interest. And I don't know why that's even in there. Are we looking to set up for litigation and costs and fees and now screening content? If that was not a term before, and there has not been some overtly prurient, and that Supreme Court status is, I know it when I see it, that's what it is, okay? And unless there has been some effort to put on that kind of staging, I don't know why you're putting that language into an agreement at all. You're just looking for a fight and money to be spent on legal issues because you're going to block content that you have no business blocking. I do not understand, because I did not compare an old licensing agreement with whatever the other one was with this one, but you're losing oversight, you're giving away oversight. You hire people to do work for you, but you still need to supervise what they're doing and know what they're doing. You cannot just let them run free rein and not have the requirement that, for example, they send the meeting minutes. What is the big deal about doing that? That's just silly. And given what Ms. Bennett said, what I'm hearing is, this is a ram through now. dates." That can't happen. Okay? So what has to happen is that through the Department of Rec, through, there has to be an agreement where she's given these dates, and no matter if another organization comes in to help run the facility part, right? You know, and that's where I was supposed to be that person. But, you know, my priority really was in music. So therefore, I wasn't the right person either. You know, there needed to be a person over it, so you have a person here, right? Then you have Theater Under the Stars, or this new production company, and then you have the music. So this person at the top could be writing grants, could be going out for money in different areas, going, and raising it for both. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I haven't, I don't know too much about all this, I'm just saying that, that you can still get her up and running, you can have a win-win situation. If you do it through the Department of Recreation, then you can sit down and work out some of these other things that, and protect her. Okay? Because she's coming in here and doing a great thing for the community with this, and the kids need this, the town needs this, we don't have a town center. We have a, what was...
Your time is up.
All right, well, okay. Can I say one more thing?
Finish, yes, please finish.
The great thing was when everyone came there, remember, Suzanne, you used to come down, hello, you'd see your neighbors, you'd get the town spirit up. That was the great thing. You know, we used to do everything for $5. So there is a grant in Essex County that you can get for music, so you can still have a free roll of music events. And I can, I can give you recommendations of who to get and how to do that, as a volunteer only. You know, to tell you of who you can hire and what you could do. But I'm telling you this because we made mistakes and we did things well, so you have both sides, and maybe this will help with what you're doing, okay? Good luck to all of you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I sit in that backseat every meeting with the pillow. I have a bad back. I sit back there because I have to get up and down. Tonight, when I walked in, I got harassed. Do you have a reserved seat by people sitting back there? I'm an elder senior citizen, that's elder abuse. It's upsetting me, it's making me shake, I'm upset. I want to be able to come here, it's an open public meeting, I want to be able to sit here and not be tortured. I've had that happen to me on social media, all these postings. Again, I'm an elder senior citizen. In my opinion, that constitutes elder abuse. Allowing that to happen is you encouraging it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosary.
I'm going to call on... I'm sorry, Gary already spoke, Claire? Yep, Claire? It's Claire? I'm sorry, it's really one turn, now it's Claire's turn? Thank you.
Is this working? Okay. Good evening, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I'm not going to speak about the legislation at this time, but I do want to talk about the issues that were raised at the last council meeting about the alleged improprieties that took place with the previous operator of Ospac, New Jersey Arts Incubator. I sat in those council meetings, in this chamber, for all the meetings that took place to discuss and approve the original and revised versions of NJAI's initial licensing agreement and supporting documents. The meetings took place on May 29th and September 11th, 2012, and March 19th, 2013. All of the discussions were lengthy, each one for more than a half an hour. At the first meeting, then NJAI Vice Chair Amy Simon was at the podium, at this podium, answering the myriad of questions from multiple council members. That night, the initial licensing agreement without the supporting documents was unanimously approved. In September, a revised licensing agreement, as well as a subleasing agreement and Ospac rules and regulations, were on the agenda. And then it was Mr. Trank, the township attorney, at the podium for 40 minutes, responding to the questions and concerns raised by a majority of the council. A main concern was that the contract had no provisions for township oversight of the subleasing agreement written for outside entities wishing to use Ospac, and no limits on the fees that NJAI could charge those groups. Also, the revised contract only required an annual reporting of NJAI's financials, rather than the quarterly reports approved in the May agreement. Mr. Trank that night affirmed that only nonprofit organizations could sublease the facility, and only the sub-licensing agreement approved by the council could be used by NJAI. Even so, Council President Cirillo at the time interrupted the questioning of Councilwoman Krkowiak and expressed his concerns with the proposal, asking that unless there was a real need for it to be approved that night, the measure be tabled and the documents reworked to address the council's concerns. The resolution was in fact tabled and appeared on the published agenda of the subsequent meeting, but that was pulled prior to that meeting and not to return for another six months. When the revised licensing agreement, subleasing agreement, and Ospac rules and regulations reemerged at the March 2013 council meeting, the same concern about the lack of any township oversight on what NJAI could charge its subleases was raised again. But it now was dismissed by other members of the council and administration as hypothetical exaggerations that could never happen. Repeated assurances came from the business administrator, Mr. Sayers, and other council members, that safeguards would be in place. The business administrator was given all sorts of oversight responsibilities, and the contract called for both the mayor and the council to each have liaisons on the NJAI board. The resolution passed three to one. But what exactly has happened during the tenure of that contract and the ensuing year? Who has been the council-appointed liaison sitting on the NJAI board for the past five or six years? Has Mr. Sayers received all of the minutes from NJAI's board meetings? And what about the annual financial reporting? The allegations of mismanagement and abuse that has arisen are staggering. At the last council meeting, during the council's response to public comment, I believe I heard Mr. Trank answer Councilwoman Matute Brown's question about a pending investigation by saying there was no pending investigation. In the last five minutes of the meeting, however, Mr. Trank responded to a question by Councilman Krkowiak by stating that he couldn't answer due to a pending investigation not being handled by the township attorney. This is all very disturbing. What is really going on? Ospac is the township's asset, our asset, and the people of West Orange deserve an answer as to what transpired at Ospac the past six years before we move forward with any new agreement. I look forward to receiving answers to my questions and those of other residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I apologize for not getting to conference agenda. Luke's in his last first year of school, last first year of college, and it's been a lot of work for all of us in the family. Megan Brill, Executive Director with the Downtown Alliance. I really wasn't going to speak about Ospac tonight, other than to say, we're looking forward to doing West Orange Idol up there at the beautiful amphitheater at Ospac with Camille Vecchio, one way or the other, whether she gets the contract tonight, or whether she just does it with us as Downtown Alliance, like we did last year. But I want to say that I work with other managers all over, all around our town, and towns would kill to have a facility like Ospac.
Jack, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
Good night.
That's one of the town employees that's interrupting.
You're leaving. Okay.
Like I was saying, that other towns have to put together a theater outside in order to run different events, and we don't have to do that, we have this beautiful facility. I remember how excited we were. And Kate, like, something terrible happened up there, like a fire? Like, there's been some crazy stuff that's happened at Ospac. And I could just say that, I know Pleasant Valley Productions for a very long time, it's not just one person. You met a bunch of the board last meeting. There's a volunteer army that comes along with Pleasant Valley Productions. And I still think that with all the information that you guys have heard, that Ospac would be in great hands with Pleasant Valley Productions. So that was all I want to say. Stacy, I don't think, got here, Stacy, the farmer's market opens this Saturday. We have about 20 vendors that are coming, and by the time the market is over in November, we should have up to 30. So the hours are nine to two, it is in 80 Main, which is across the street from the West Orange Car Wash. So please come out, you can come to the BYOE, bring your own easel art event, and then check out the farmer's market. So we're very excited about all of that. There's so much stuff going on, and it's, it's nice to be able to be with, with all of our business owners. I struggle every day to try to communicate clearly with our business owners, and what's the best time to talk to them? And when do they open up their email? And, you know, when are they not busy in their stores? When can we? So we decided to do something different this time, and we mailed, we snail mailed, 200 packets out to 200 of our best businesses. And the result is insane. I like walk past people's stores, and they're waving the packet, they have their Downtown Alliance pen and chapstick that I sent in there, hoping that they would read it, if they had some goodies in there. And it really worked. And I'm surprised that they were as excited as I was about our chapstick. But the really great thing is that, now, we had to share a lot of the information with them. We have the street fair coming up in just under, just under three weeks, like, two weeks out. We have Downtown Thursdays, we have West Orange Idol, which is going to be a huge event for our township and our business owners, and we moved that to Sunday, so I needed them to know that. And what I found is that when we mailed something to them, they got it in the mail, and they thought it was big and heavy and had stuff in it, so they put it to the side. And when it was convenient for them, that's when they opened it, and that's when they looked at it, and that's when they responded back to me. So I'm really, really excited about all the great things that we have going on. You can watch our Facebook page for all that information. The thing that is important about our street fair, and we always said, other towns do street fairs, and the goals of our fair are to have our business owners meet our residents, and collaborate, and work together. And it's great when we're sitting there setting up, and you're meeting all the people that you didn't know had that business or offered that service, and now you get to see them. But a really neat byproduct happened just yesterday, seems like a lot longer than that, but we got a phone call, actually, I think it was Saturday, I was in the office, I like to be in the office on Saturday when no one else, but Joe Fagan is here. And we got a phone call and an email from Be The Match Foundation. And Be The Match is a company that gets stem cell donors for people with cancer. And there's a little girl in West Orange, we're going to push out a full press release about it, but there's a little girl with it in West Orange that needs bone marrow, a stem cell transplant. They have 20 million people in the database, and not one is matched for this little West Orange girl. So this company sent me the email and said, "Do you think it would be okay if we purchased a booth at your street fair?" And I was like, "We cannot purchase a booth at our street fair." We, I emailed Joe, we got Stacy on board, everybody got together, and we're going to have the biggest street fair celebration for this little girl and this company. And that's just one of the byproducts of having the street fair, the way we set it up, the way we do it, and the opportunities that we get to share with one another and really, really take care of one another. And if we can find a donor at that street fair, you need to be 18 to 44 years old, you're going to hear a lot about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mention the Memorial Day event again, because we forgot to say it.
Oh, sure. Yeah, Memorial Day coming up, please, please attend. It's very important, we do a beautiful ceremony in town. And actually, in 2014, my son was here, when the Junior ROTC first became involved in that wonderful celebration, so please, please come out, 10 o'clock on Memorial Day. Suzanne Pennell, before I forget, 27 Fairview Avenue. The reason, I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to remind us all that we are all neighbors. We don't all have to be friends, we are all neighbors. The reason I say that is because, right now, I haven't heard from my son for a few days, I'm, I'm sure he's fine. Last week, he was in a rather dangerous part of the world, and a lot of his friends that he was commissioned with have been called up on ships to go into the Arabian Gulf. So the world has a whole lot of stuff going on. Having passion for things is a very good thing. And researching, and believing in something, and wanting to see something right and true and to the end, is all a good thing. That's what we're supposed to do. But we have to remember that just because we don't agree, it doesn't mean that we have to go outside of the issues box into places we don't belong. That's one of the reasons why there are ships and troops being sent, because grownups have taken it way beyond where it needs to go. And while the young men and women sign their names and are well aware of what's expected of them, the least we can do while we are here, especially here, right now in this town which supports and honors and loves those who serve and have served so much, not just the community, but the world, please, let's just take a breath, and just remember that while we're doing this, they're all out there, and this is not supporting all of them. So keep researching, keep, you know, putting forth your issues, but please, everybody, just take a breath, and remember, there are young men and women who need all of our thoughts right now, and prayers, if that's what you do. Please, all of them, and may they all come home safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Something, just Phil?
My name is Mickalina Formata, I live at Tengaston Street. I'm a senior resident in the Renna House. I did not initiate this request, but Michelle Costellano and Jerry, can't even remember who's, Garino, mentioned refurbished computers in the senior houses. What is the status of that? Okay?
We'll let you know at the end, after everybody speaks.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mott.
Any other comments?
Lauren Svetvilaus, Prospect Avenue. And like many others tonight, I wasn't planning on talking, but I would like to propose a resolution that we designate the last row seat center to Rosary, maybe a little plaque. She's here, she's tried and true, she's here all the time. We all know that that's her seat, she's here all the time. We know where more or less township cheerleaders are all the time. We can hear them most loudly, they're the loudest claps. So I would love to see that happen. If you want to put it to a referendum, that would be great too. I'd vote for it. We are very good in West Orange at cheerleading. We have an HR commission, we have the downtown alliance, we have PIO, we have a Facebook guy. Anytime, we are doing so much to market ourselves, produce ourselves, make us look really good, you need a lot of lipstick when there's a lot of things going on in town that are not so, not so kosher, I guess. So with OSPAC, I know the woman that spoke earlier, I think it was Katie, I'm not sure, she came in, I'm not sure who called her last minute, I don't know, but I think her words were great and that this is a perfect reason, that we really need to just sit back on this, this vote, table it for a little bit, really get it planned out a little better. There's no need to jump into it, as Ms. Brill said, if it's the downtown alliance that sponsors any events up there, that's great. So what's the rush, especially a three-year agreement? And if anyone has any issues in the back, like I know it was actually a township official, Rose DeSana, who was a little loud earlier, she left, she stormed out, but that's what this podium's for. I think she's allowed as a township employee to speak. I'm not sure of the law, but I think using this podium's great. It's a, it's a good spot to come up and you guys are always welcoming of our words. So that's about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, Anthony.
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. Just want to make you aware of two upcoming events that the county is hosting. One is on Saturday, Saturday, May 18th, from nine to three. That's the household, sorry, that was last weekend. The Computer and Electronics Recycling Day. And we have a new location, which is the Public Works Transportation Facility at 99 Bradford Avenue. Excuse me, everything worked out on May 3rd at the new location, so we expect the same results this coming Saturday. And then also on June 1st, down on Main Street, you have your street fair. Up at Turtleback Zoo, we have the annual open house. It's a great opportunity for residents to find out what Essex County does. We'll have, all of our departments will have tables and displays and we try to create like a little carnival atmosphere, so it's more than just handing out brochures. We encourage everybody to come. There is free admission to the zoo all day and the prime hours for the open house are 10 to 2. As always, this information and more is on our website, which is essexcountyandj.org.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
And before you go, I do have a question. So you just heard Mickey Formato asking about computers. I had reached out to the Board of Education when we first talked about that.
I missed your.
Oh, I'm sorry. God bless you. About the, you're just talking about next weekend having the electronics and computer recycling. Do you have staff or people that actually go through that and is there anything worth keeping or?
That's through a third-party vendor that does the collection for us, so I really would have to ask them if they would make those computers available.
Right.
Which I can do.
Do you have that in place already on the county?
I'm unaware of.
We were doing it locally.
Yeah, I'm unaware of that.
Okay.
So I can definitely.
Put that on your to-do list?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Just before you start responding, I just want to remind everybody that we don't talk in a public meeting about pending investigations. We do have an executive session scheduled this evening and the police chief is here and I'm here to discuss a little bit about that. Also want to point out that Mark Moon is here. He did work on the OSPAC matters, so if there's questions, he's here to answer them.
Okay, so we can answer everything else. Thank you. Comments? I'll start by thanking Tammy for coming in with your agenda. I hope the weather holds out tomorrow for the Haitian flag. I think we have, I know we brought the Indian flag raising inside one year because of the weather not cooperating, so we should see clear skies. It is May 15th, hopefully, thank you. Thanks for the invitation for the line dancing. Not that coordinated. Joe, thank you for all the coverage on the Rock Spring Golf Club. Just to let everyone know that that is the new name, Rock Spring Golf Club. You can go to rsgc.com to find information about that. Appreciate that. Gary Van Wick, I just wanted to mention about, I know you've come to our environmental commission meetings, you know, we hear your passion, we know all about that. It almost sounds like we do need a neighborhood watch for things like that because that isn't something, you know, I'm talking about Woodland Avenue, the trees that were taken down, that isn't something we would have known unless someone brought it to our attention. And as soon as it was, officials were called out and just as you mentioned, it was just, it was too late. The whole situation, it's not a matter of tightening our ordinances, they're already there. As you mentioned, the operators were already registered. It's like a neighborhood watch, just like, and I'm thinking the analogy was when all the recycling laws were changed last year, we, I looked at, we launched something called Recycle Coach and that spells everything out on the town website about what can and can be recycled at this point. And we can start a campaign, start with a social media campaign to, to talk about our ordinances, to talk about contractors being registered, about the fines, penalties, enforcement, spell everything out on the web, social media campaign to do that, to inform people. That happens all the time, we pass an ordinance and how does it get out there for people to know? So I appreciate your comments on that. Megan, the snail mail, it is very effective because you do have something tangible and it doesn't get buried in the hundreds that you receive each day. So just keep up the good work and the idea of, even what Kate Baker was saying, that my takeaway was very different than what Lauren just said. My takeaway is that we are a community that comes together and we do create partnerships and I know that that's, that's all to be discussed. And that's what the street fair is all about as well. Suzanne, your emotional pitch is a wonderful reminder to all of us and personally, my thoughts and prayers are with you. And Dylan. And Mickey, I don't know if Mickey Formato's still here, I can't see, but we have the county working, we have, I just assigned Anthony that task to look at their recycling. I will go back to the Board of Education and even right here in town, in Town Hall. John, now that we have this IT department, if there's anything that we can put aside as we upgrade equipment and send it over to the, to the senior housing. Thank you, Mickey, for the reminder. Any other comments? Yes, Councilwoman?
Mickey, Ms. Formato, thank you for coming down. You are correct, we had spoken about the computers. We had written in a grant, which we did receive the grant, but unfortunately, the portion of the grant for the computers at the Renna House and the Degnan House weren't approved, just a position for the Senior Livabilities Coordinator, which is great news that we did get the grant funds for that position, which we're working on. I did mention the initiative to Ms. Van Dyke, that is our new senior coordinator. So it's on, you know, her to-do list. So again, we're looking for other grant opportunities and working with the high school to see if they could get us some refurbished equipment. I know in their budget, they were getting some new technology, so hopefully Phil Santiago up at the school district could find us something. But in the meantime, we'll pursue any grant opportunity that we can. Just so you folks out there know, reason why we wanted to get some computers at our senior houses, it would be great if we could, if the residents could Skype with their loved ones and, which is a great thing. So that's what we were looking to do, as well as, you know, anytime we could infuse technology and have the seniors, or the seniors, the mountaineer mentors up at the high school come down and work with our seniors. It's a great thing and we look forward to moving on that. So we are building up the Social Senior Services Department and it's something that is on a to-do list, so we'll be working on that. In regards to, let's see here, talked about a few things. I'll go into the ordinances when it's time to speak about the ordinances. I'll just touch quickly and thank Kate for coming down. Long conversation with her today, educated me, spent a lot of phone time. Thank you Camille as well, just trying to work things out with this, but again, I'll speak in more detail in regard to this ordinance. And just to a comment, Ms. Bennett, I know you had mentioned what our obligations are and I'm sure, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but we take it very seriously. You know, we sometimes may all agree, sometimes a few of us don't agree, but I know we put the hours in and, you know, you know, multiple hours in a week, just today alone, just doing our due diligence and what we need to ask the right questions and working with council. I know I had Mr. Moon crazy as well today and this past week with asking the diligent questions. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the last council meeting and just got back from vacation not too long ago, but we do put our hours in, so we do take our obligation very seriously and I'm sure I could speak for the rest of my colleagues on that. Megan, farmer's market, you know, excited about that. If you could get that information to senior services too, so they could get their email out as well, to spread the news on that. Also, this past week, Nicholas Anthony's Family Restaurant had their ribbon cutting, so that was great and to see that business has been flourishing down on Main Street and, and thank you for your hard work. Suzanne, as always, you just get me right here and our prayers are always with Dylan and the rest of our troops, so God bless him and them. And thank you for mentioning Memorial Day because it's always a great service when, when the high school comes down with our veterans. Again, 10 a.m. on Memorial Day out front of Town Hall, so thank you for mentioning that. Let me see what other, without going into the ordinances. Gary and Lauren, I always appreciate both of you's with your advocacy, but there are residents that still don't know that they may need a permit. Mr. Sarris, I mean, there's other things we could do. Council mentioned social media, which I know with Perry, he's been good with some of, not just PR stuff, but also on information for residents, he could maybe put together a little, you know, did you know that you need a permit? So maybe we could work on that. And there's always, I know our tax bill comes out in July or the end of July and I know the mayor sometimes does the letter, so maybe we can mention it there. But, you know, we can mention it as much as you want. I did hear about the situation, but I also did in conversation and have calls with people asking me questions, some folks feel they have, are entitled to, to, I think, as much as we promote and educate the rest of our residents, and Gary, you and I have had this conversation in the past, there's some folks feel that they could, you know, may want to cut down or do what they want on their own property, so it may, you know, promote some other debate, but I think it's good to educate the public and let them know what our ordinances are and to enforce them as well. Gina, thank you very much, I saw you working hard the other day. You also help promote sales at our plant and books sale at the library from having your group out there that day. And I think that's it. Reserve the rest of my comments for, for when we get to the ordinance. Thank you.
See, you're still writing, so if you didn't clear.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to everyone who came up and spoke this evening. I'm not going to address each person, but I do want to just, all of those who spoke about the OSPAC ordinance and licensing agreement, I'm going to reserve that till later in the meeting. Do want to try to address what Mr. Van Wick and Mr. Svetvilaus were saying. I want to take this opportunity to tell people what our tree ordinance is. It's actually a tree protection ordinance. It requires that every tree that's cut down have a permit. Contact the town, get to the forester and go through the permit process. It exempts a permit from any property owner who wants to cut down up to three trees in an improved lot in any 365-day period. Even if you cut down those trees, you're required under the ordinance to file a tree cutting report with the forester within five days. One of the things I didn't hear about this particular incident is that I haven't heard the phrase retroactive permit. Frequently what happens in the town is when people do raise this issue and they don't, the people, the people who are cutting don't have a permit, they're issued retroactive permits by the township, even though there is nothing in our tree ordinance that allows a retroactive permit, but it does avoid their penalties. If you see a tree being cut down, just very neighborly, like Ms. Pennell said, just go up and just say, "Do you have a permit for that?" And if they don't have a permit, then you can call the town and ask if they have a permit. If you can't get anybody from the town and they're about to cut down the tree, call the police. The police are enabled to enforce our tree ordinance. Ms. Riley, I am, I am truly sorry that you're having problems back there, as Mr. Svetvilaus talked about, that's, that is your place where you hang out. I would like to just propose for the council to discuss this at New Matters. We've got signs on the side of the benches in the front asking for allowances for certain matters. I don't see any reason why we couldn't discuss if we're all in agreement. We could put a sign up on the back that said, you know, if you, please show respect and deference, deference to seniors who would like to sit back there. I think she has a very good reason why. Ms. Pennell, thanks very much. You, as usual, cut to the heart of the matter. We are neighbors. We don't have to agree, we don't have to live next to each other, but we are all neighbors and we should treat everyone as we would like to be treated. So thank you for saying that. That's it, Council President.
Thank you for the public service announcement on the tree protection.
Can't do enough.
That's very right, because also we can put that on TV 36 and TV 45, a message there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
I will start backwards since that's where I am here. Lauren, thank you for your advocacy and Gary as well, I'll address you as well in the same response. It is all of our responsibilities and I did get a call on that day and it was a very frantic call and I have to say that the township did respond right away. Unfortunately, they were so far into having removed so many trees that short of the township representation there, you know, physically jumping on the machinery, that would be impossible, but they, I was happy to see that they responded immediately. With respect to enforcement, I would certainly like to discuss that. I think that it certainly serves as something that, you know, once the word spreads, you know, and bad news spreads quickly, you know, people will, will understand what their obligation is and therefore assume the consequences if they will, but we have to enforce our ordinances, otherwise why have them? otherwise why have them? Lauren, if you would, through our Green West Orange Star to Media Blitz, advising people of what our ordinance is, maybe shoot stuff out on social media, that would be great too, to help us. I mean, the more of us that share this information, the more people we reach. So that would be great. Not everyone's on social media, so please make sure when you see your neighbors with a chainsaw, that you remind them what the fee is, the fine is. Susan, my heart breaks every time I see pictures or hear about Dylan. I can't imagine the distance and separation, but thank you for your words of compassion. I think we all need to show compassion to one another. We are very passionate about what we believe in. We're firm in our ideologies, and there's nothing wrong with that. I appreciate all of the information, whatever the avenue is, and I take that and I do what I will with it, but please remember to have compassion for one another, and thank you for reminding us that we're all neighbors, and we're not always going to agree, and it's okay to disagree. Megan, as always, thank you for sharing your plans for the downtown West Orange. I look forward to this year's street fair. That was very touching, and thank you for sharing that with us. I'm sure it'll draw a lot of people out to help her. And I'll put my glasses on because it's that issue. Clara, I'll address later when we talk about the ordinance. Rosary, I am so sorry that you were made to feel uncomfortable. I'm sitting up here, and I am uncomfortable. That was an outrageous display, and I do agree with showing deference to seniors. You know, one could argue, well, why don't they just sit up here? That's closer to the door and maybe an exit or a restroom, so that is something that hopefully council can discuss under new business. Kate Baker, we'll discuss later. Vivian, thank you for your comments coming out. I don't know if you're still here. Glad to see you. Sticking to coming to town council meetings and staying involved, thank you. I do appreciate that, and thank you for your words with respect to the treason enforcement of the ordinance is certainly necessary. Gina, you know, I have nothing but love for you. Thank you for all your hard work and your advocacy and dedication. Joe, we had 400 attendees at the Rock Spring event. I'm so sorry, I was in Atlantic City at a work conference, so I missed it. I did want to take a moment and ask during that time, how was the parking in the area with that many people were there? I didn't receive any emails, so I want to say it's safe to assume that it was fine.
It was full.
It was full. It spilled out into the street a little bit.
It did, okay. And I know we talked about it, maybe when we're done, you can just remind everyone what the process of where we are with doing the study, I believe, that is being done there, and what the timeline is for that, for the residences. I think if I saw 400 cars in my neighborhood, it might freak me out a little bit. What else, what else, what else? And Ms. Bennet, I will just say that I appreciate your tenacity. It takes a lot of courage to stand out and speak out against things that you're passionate about, and we may not all agree, and some of us may agree. I won't address the ordinance itself, but I think I am one to say, and I will speak for myself and not the rest of my council colleagues, I absorb everything. I may not comment and respond right away, but I make up my own mind when it comes to everything I do in my life, not just here, but I take this role as an elected official that much more seriously. So when I come to a decision, it has been through a lot of painstaking research. I feel like I'm an undergrad again, and that's okay, because that's why I ran, but please understand that I do take this position very seriously. So the choices that I make, they're well thought out, and first and foremost, with the residents in mind, so. Ms. Williams, thank you for sharing all of the events that are happening at the HRC, and I look forward to the ceremony tomorrow as well. Hopefully we have good weather. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, thank you also for being respectful to the residents in that area, because there were cars parked on many of the side roads there, but DPW, they were also doing work, so one whole parking lot, one whole parking lot had been closed off, so that would have alleviated some of the traffic on some of the roads.
Good point.
Hello?
Yes, Council President? Any comments?
Hi, can I, oh, can I say something?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to, you know, first thank Megan Brill for updates on downtown. Also, maybe you forgot to talk about the new yoga studio on Washington Street.
Oh, yeah.
It's a fantastic place, had a great opening, and the young lady who opened it actually moved into town, so she's a great resident now.
Yoga ground.
Business owner. Secondly, well, I noticed one of the residents, and I'm sorry I didn't get their name, was talking about the PCs for Rent a House. Marzulli Company and Dan from Marzulli Company committed to paying for new computers for Rent a House at the Rent a House scene.
Oh, good.
So I'm not on that board anymore. I'm sure Councilwoman Martin can't follow up with Marzulli, and they will get the PCs for Rent a House.
Thank you.
Because that was agreed to with the excess capital that we had.
Thank you for that. I'll add it to my notes.
And also with Councilwoman Kocovia, we all need to talk proper to each and everybody, including our own colleagues. And that's all I have to say. And the tree ordinance, we need to enforce it. We need to be respectful of our green trees, and we have to do as much more as possible to protect them and not just talk about it. We need to act on this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Okay.
And then go into the executive session.
And then, yeah, is that what they want to do?
Okay.
Review the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, and executive session of April 30th, 2019.
Abstain.
Report of township's officers, none reading. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Planning Board recommendation, proposed ordinance 2565-19. Planning Board resolution 19-02.
Consent.
Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Resolution 134, I'd like to pull. And I have questions on others. I won't pull them, but I have questions and a comment.
134.
Do you have any other resolutions, Michelle? Any resolutions being pulled?
No.
First, we'll pull the resolutions and then ask questions. Joe?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to pull Agenda Item D, Resolution 128-19, Resolution authorizing a change order. Also like to pull for Agenda Item M and N. These are resolutions 137-19, 138-19. It's the resolution authorizing the township to enter into memorandum of agreement with our two firefighter unions. And I do have a few other questions, and those can wait in appropriate time, please.
Can you read those back? So it was M?
M and N.
Yeah.
And Ns.
The two contracts. Councilwoman Matu Brown, would you like to ask your question now?
Oh, yes. Thank you. So sorry, not prepared to. Yes, so several questions in respect to this resolution, and for those, for the benefit of the residents that are here with us and don't have the resolution, this is Resolution Number 134-19, is a resolution requesting planning board review of a resolution designating certain property in the township as an area in need of rehabilitation and authorizing the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation.
Yeah, I know.
This was being pulled.
Yes, I pulled that.
Right, so.
Oh, well, discuss that. Oh, they asked me questions.
Oh, it's to ask my questions.
Yeah, not the ones that are. Those questions, you said you had additional questions.
That's why I said I wasn't prepared. Okay.
That's just a quick question.
If you have questions about other.
I do, I do. Sorry, that's why I wasn't prepared for this one.
That's okay.
Okay, so for Resolution authorizing the professional appraisal services to evaluate the fair market value property located at 200 Pleasant Valley Way. I noticed that this was not put out to bid. Can I ask how this appraisal or this firm was selected? Was it put out to bid? I should, let's start there. Was that?
No, it's a professional services.
It's a professional service.
By definition, professional services are not put out.
They don't have to be. They can be, but they're not.
They're never put out to bid.
Okay.
You can go out for quotes.
You can go out for quotes.
Right.
Okay. That was for?
I'm sorry, and if it's over 17.5.
Then.
You're required to go out for quotes.
Okay. That's MAI, all right. And that resolution talks about consensual or non-consensual acquisition. Can you discuss and explain that to me, please?
It's whether the seller agrees to sell or not.
So for the benefit of the residents that are in Town Hall, this is talking about a property that is vacant land at 200 Pleasant Valley Way. And by the way, this can also, all these documents can be found on our website under the document center, and there is a named owner here. There has been attempts by the administration to contact and meet with the owner to discuss the potential acquisition, which to me, because we are passing or proposing this resolution, those conversations may or may not have been fruitful. So this is just to get an appraisal for this.
This is to get an appraisal, and it is not that it hasn't been fruitful.
Okay.
It is that it certainly has not come to a conclusion.
A conclusion, okay.
Any kind of a conclusion, but we certainly always strive to reach agreements.
Oh, absolutely. I did not intend to mean anything other than fruitful by not being, anything other than...
It's not cooked yet, that's for sure.
Okay, meaning that we have not reached an agreement. That's why this resolution is being presented, so that we can have an appraisal.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. And you explain the contract being offered as a non-fair and open appraisal, that's because it's a professional contract.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are we, am I going to go through all the questions that I have?
Your questions, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So the next one is respect to 128-19, which is...
Well, that was pulled.
Oh, you pulled that. Okay, thank you. 129-19, I also had a question about. This is for the repairs that are being, or to be done or being done on Old Indian Road with the intersection of Pleasant Valley. And I understand that there was contributions made last fall from New Jersey American Water Company, because they installed a new main on that, and they contributed $67,895 towards the milling, is that it? Are we milling that road?
Milling and paving.
Milling and paving, okay. So is that contribution in addition to the amount that the township is going to be responsible for as well, for the total? Is that inclusive?
Angela's going to answer your question.
Thank you.
By definition, the answer has to be yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You said you did his job for him already.
It's inclusive.
It's inclusive.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the total.
It's an addition to what we're paying. We're not paying that portion.
Right, we're, I'm asking for an additional $100,000, of which $67,000 is being funded through the water company, or being provided by the water company.
Okay, so you're asking for $100,000, and $67,000 was already.
Right, and there's additional work that we're doing that, such as fixing inlets, that isn't necessarily part of what the water company would necessarily do.
Do. Okay, I just needed that clarification. Thank you.
Why is there a question? The other changing?
No, because Joe pulled that one, so. Let's see, what else? Oh, yes, 130-19, and this is a learning lesson for all of us, right? Because I'm not the only one learning alone. So this resolution is with respect to the township having filed an affirmative tax appeal with regard to certain property, which is known as the Brighton Gardens, and there is a settlement that the township has come to with Brighton Gardens. So it says for the year 2018, the taxes were, went from $13,586,200 to $15,716,750, and then it says it increases the value of taxes to $86,031. Is that back taxes that were not paid?
It'd be taxes, no, it'd be taxes, it's the additional taxes for the increased value. The first set of numbers is the change in value, and then that drives how much tax value is for that year.
Okay, and then the additional for the following year of 2019, the taxes will increase to $16 million.
And that's not, the amount is not specified, because we haven't set a tax rate yet.
Okay. That's why it was blank and I wasn't asked, thank you. But that was my curiosity as to where the $86,000 came from.
All right, the difference.
I tried to do the math, it didn't work out for me, so I needed the clarification, which is why I'm not an accountant and you are. Let's see, what else I had questions for? Oh, Joe, you pulled that one, okay. Joe pulled the other two I had questions for, and I'll have a comment on that. Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Great. Julia, question?
Yes, thank you. On, I wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Matu Brown's questions on Resolution 126-19. I wasn't clear, did you ask for multiple quotes?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Why does the town want to acquire this property? If I am interpreting that correctly, we want an appraisal of the property, why do we want to acquire it?
I believe it's a potential site for the public works.
Correct. That's a good answer. Mr. Kader, would you happen to remember the last time the township has actually used eminent domain condemnation to acquire property?
I don't recall. It's been quite a while. I think we always try to avoid it, and, you know, we hope to avoid it here, I think. I mean, if we can work out a deal, we'd much rather. We always want to avoid it if we can.
Okay, thank you. Question, follow-up with Councilwoman Matu Brown on Resolution 130-19, the affirmative tax appeal. This is, this property is Brighton Gardens, correct? I had asked you a question. I don't know whether you were able to get the answer, but I asked why we didn't go back further, given the substantial increase in the appraisal value of this from 2017 to 2018. It was a huge increase.
I don't have the answer back yet. However, I will tell you that a lot of it is driven by when the appeals were first filed. So you can't, you can't go back and file for previous years. So once it came to intention, the market, the market changed, the market values, properties are increasing value, and it was, it came to the intention of the council, whatever they, the first year they filed for is as far back as we can go. Now, your question is why wasn't it filed before, and I don't have the answer.
Right, because these guys, we retain them manually, and they're constantly looking at the numbers, correct?
And believe you, and since it's their interest, they're very, they look at these pretty strongly. So for some reason, you know, this was not, didn't come to the top previously, I'd have to ask, I'd wait for him to answer that, why, but I'm sure there's a reason.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all the questions I had.
Yeah, 128-19, Resolution authorizing change order number three for the contract 2017 street improvements, phase four, with regio construction, in the amount of $59,716.51 was pulled by Councilwoman Kocovia.
Yes, thank you. This is, this is yet another one of these.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I didn't do the consent agenda. I apologize.
I'll need to change my.
No, 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 no. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So a second.
Sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Did you already do that?
Councilwoman, are you there? Hello, am I allowed? I'm here.
Okay.
Am I allowed to vote on that?
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda... The consent agenda is implemented. 128-19, Councilman Kukovia.
As, as frequent flyers of the council meetings know, I, I have a philosophical difference with doing work, expending the money, incurring the liability, and then coming to the council for approval of it. So I just pulled this because I wanted to have a vote, and to vote against it, because we've already spent this money, and I didn't really need to discuss any more.
Councilman, and I'll just point this out, and maybe it doesn't matter. This, by definition, since it's as-built quantities, you can't do before you finish. This particular change order has to be done at the end. So it could go up, it could go down, depending on the quantities. So by definition, this work has to be done, because this is the end of the job.
Okay. No, I realize it's the end of the job, but again, Mr. Lepore takes the step to say, we want to spend more money.
No, no, that's not what this is. This is as-built. In other words, when they calculate, he can speak more about it than I can. When they calculate how much McCattan they, they need to put down, there's a number. That number is an estimate, and what they actually put down can either be higher or lower. And that's just an example.
There actually happened to be two other contracts, phase two and phase three, where actually we're below what the authorized amount was, so, and that, that was the as-built. So sometimes we're, we're lower, sometimes we're higher. Again, I'll just reiterate, this isn't a change in scope or change in anything that wasn't previously authorized. It's the streets, it's the work, it's just that the final numbers on this particular contract were, were an increase from, from the award amount. Okay. I apologize, I misunderstood the, the resolution and your response, so apologies.
Is there a motion to approve 128-19?
Some of.
Second. Councilwoman Catalino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Two Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. He said yes.
He said yes. Okay. The next ordinance pulled was 134-19. A resolution requesting planning board review of a resolution designating certain property in the township as an area, I'm sorry, as an area in need of rehabilitation, and authorizing the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain properties within blocks 116 and 116.01 qualify for designation as condemnation area in need of redevelopment. Councilwoman Two Brown?
So I pulled this resolution because there are a lot of properties listed here, and when I looked at the map, I will not be shy and say that it shocked my conscience. I understand the need for redevelopment. I actually support redevelopment. When I ran, I ran on responsible redevelopment, and I'm not making allegations that this is not it. But I have questions to get to that responsible point where I make a decision. So my first question is, all of the homeowners listed here, homeowners' property?
Cindy, may I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is not a redevelopment? This is rehabilitation because of the water's?
Rehabilitation. Thank you. Thank you. Rehabilitation.
Very different.
Okay. I was, I was gonna get, wait, I can, I can...
Wait, yeah. Let's make it clear. It says redevelopment in...
And rehabilitation. It says it both.
I can explain.
Two different times, if I can finish. Thank you. So my, my first question, and I did have a conversation with the mayor about this, and he was able to clarify some of the questions I had, but some he wasn't quite sure on. As far as requirement notices, is there a requirement notice to be given to the property owners, I don't know if they're homes or not, but property owners, in advance of the study? Is there a requirement? Maybe Mr. Moon or Mr. Kaiser can...
Not in advance of the study.
Legally, is there a requirement?
Here in the planning board.
The planning board here is...
So, so it's not required to give residents notice that their area, or the property that their area, their, the area that the property is, is in, is going to undergo an evaluation? That's not a requirement?
Not for the study.
Not for the study? Okay. That was my first question. And, and I want to think long game, right? Because I know that this is a resolution that's being asked, but compartmentalizing decisions for me without understanding the long-term implications is not something that I can do. So what happens, let's just assume that this resolution passes. What happens to the homeowner's property values should this area be designated an area in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation?
Well, first off, before I answer that question...
Okay.
Let me, let's, let's, let's put a, a point in time where we are now, and a point in time where, when that would come up. Right now, what you're considering is a resolution that allows the planning, or asks the planning board to consider looking at the area, whether, sorry, whether it's an area in need of redevelopment and/or...
Rehabilitation.
An area in need of rehabilitation. The differentiation between the two is redevelopment has more incentives and more power, the authority that the governing body has than rehabilitation. The reason this resolution is the way, is reading the way it is, is because it's unclear. You know, a lot of times we, we look at properties and say, okay, this looks pretty clear that it's going to be redevelopment, qualified redevelopment, or it's pretty clear, no, it won't qualify redevelopment, but it'll qualify for rehabilitation. In this situation, it's not clear. So that's the reason that the resolution is formatted the way that it is. Merely adopting this resolution, only authorize, asks the, the planning board to do, do the study, and then hold a hearing on whatever the recommendations come from the study. And then from there, if indeed the planning board approves, or says that, you know, makes a recommendation back to council, it would come back to the council again at some point in time in the future, for the council to decide whether or not it is indeed an area of redevelopment, or an area of rehabilitation, or neither. At that point in time, there's really no impact still on property owners, because there's not a plan that talks about what the use of the property is. So right at that point in time, the, the current zoning still exists, nothing has changed. And then if indeed the council then decides that it wants to move forward and develop a plan with the planning board, and, and then comes to a point where they actually adopt a plan and change the zoning, that is the point in time when property values may be impacted. And that's, you know, much further down. So as part of that, so, and with this particular situation, the possibilities are very wide, because you could have, as I said, three things. Area in need of redevelopment, an area in need of rehabilitation, or none of those things. Or some, some, some properties, none. So it's really right now, just taking a look at it. One of the big challenges we have there is the fact that our infrastructure is, is very challenging there. And so it's very difficult at this point in time to take a look and see what are all the obstacles to that, and what are the opportunities that could come along with that?
I, I still, just let me finish my train of thought. I appreciate that explanation. That's where I was getting to, wanting to know just if they would be impacted, how they would be impacted. But I understand that it's too early to tell, because it's undefined at this time, what the use may be, the plan may be, if there is a plan. I get that. So would their taxes be affected at all?
No.
If they're in an area in need of redevelopment? So they don't, okay. You said notices aren't required. And also, I, I did read Lenny's opinion with respect to the sewer and the water infrastructure that exists in that area, the issue, you know, and the recommend, well, is it a recommendation? Is this, is Lenny's letter a recommendation? Or just a report?
I don't think it's opposition, so.
Okay. Well, no, I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't being facetious. Okay. So where, where it says, "A rehabilitation program will promote the improvement of the water and sewer system, and the existing housing stock will improve the public welfare for the long, for, for those along Main Street and surrounding neighborhoods." Now, I can tell you what that means to me when I read it. Obviously, the sewer line's very clear. But when I read, you know, that it's going to, you know, the, improve the existing housing stock for the public welfare, can you tell me in your understanding what that means? Because I'm going to be very honest, when I read something like that, I...
There's not a neighborhood in the, in the township that we don't encourage improving the housing stock.
No, absolutely. I agree with that. But here's what, here's what I read. I read gentrification, and that's where I got stuck.
Well, that's, that's where you, you have the opportunity to determine through the plan what, what those things mean. It's not, it's not up for me, it's, it's up for the council to determine in, in the plan, what it wants to do in that plan. And that is where, if you're going to have a discussion about gentrification, that's probably where.
I just wanted to be clear that when I make my decision how I'm going to vote, that, you know, I read through this very thoroughly, and, and obviously came here with questions so that I can understand very clearly what my vote would be, and I just wanted to point that out, that I had some concerns. Because, you know, I, I do obviously want to see Main Street vibrant. I want to see the businesses there continue to succeed and expand, you know, no disrespect to the county executive, but when we have forty-seven thousand visitors and, you know, they come in and leave West Orange, that, you know, it is a concern for me. So I'm not anti, you know, development, but when I read that, that was concerning to me. And then just because when I looked at the, these same properties were pulled, were they the same properties that were pulled from the last agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, that reads differently. It didn't have this...
No. What happened was the last agenda didn't have as much, if or at all, about the rehabilitation.
Yes.
And when we looked at it, we said, we really do need to get the rehabilitation here, because we, again, we have questions as to whether or not, what properties may or may not qualify for redevelopment.
Okay. And then my last question with respect to the Main, Main Street, is that when Edison was, and continues to be developed, was there a study for the infrastructure of sewer and water at that time?
I wasn't here, so I can't answer that. Mr. Lepore is still here.
I'm sorry, Lenny, I'm gonna, you need to sit up here.
Yeah.
Well, we reserve a seat for Rosary.
Yeah, we'll reserve one right next to...
For Lenny.
In answer to your question, yes, there was, and actually, some of the, the resolution that has to do with the bond reduction did include improvements to the sewer system in and around the Edison Battery Building.
The bond reduction can, on our agenda?
Tonight, there's a resolution.
This is on our agenda this evening?
There's a resolution.
I saw, oh, yeah, the, okay.
A site improvement bond.
Okay.
For the Edison Battery Building. And in that bond were improvements made to sanitary sewer systems, as well as the, the road system.
Okay. Thank you.
Cindy, there's a list here of all of the improvements that were made on...
That is so, by the way, I tried to even read them.
The font is very small.
I couldn't even read them with these. And my husband wasn't home to borrow his magnifying glasses, so, but yes, I tried that.
Actually, he has a magnifying glass.
Okay. Those are, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. The next...
Thank you. Councilman Kukovia?
Mr. Lepore, I know you've wrote a rather exhaustive rehabilitation report to support this resolution. Could you tell me a little bit about the, I guess, the age or the, or the problems with the water and the sewer? And, and what will actually have to be done if the council moves forward? Well, the, the age of the structures and the infrastructure are all approximately the same. They all date back to the turn of the prior century.
Yeah.
From the nineteenth to the twentieth. There's a sewer system, again, dates back to the very late eighteen hundreds, around the same time the joint meeting was, was developed. The sewers are over a hundred years old now. They tend to be fragile. They tend to not, they tend to leak water, but only when, when there's a high water table. So we have a lot of extraneous flows in that system, and occasionally it will result in a sewer manhole popping. The water main is also old. However, while it may not have some of the maintenance problems of the sewer system, it, it's a smaller main than we typically see serving other areas of, of the township. So the ability, in my opinion, to provide adequate fire flow, especially where we have a lot of old frame structures, is, is, is not there. I'm not saying that there's a hazard, but certainly the water company was asked by me to go and look at what some of their fire flows are in that area, because, again, I said there's an eight-inch main. Typically, in other areas of town, we have twelve and sixteen-inch mains supplying water to the town. So clearly, the age of the infrastructure is well over fifty years. Unfortunately, I'm at the point now where I've been here almost forty, so to stretch that another ten years into my memory isn't, isn't that far. But in this particular case, they're well over a century old and approaching a hundred twenty years. So what would be involved with replacing all of this relative to the road and the ability for traffic to pass? Well, that's, that's, that's going to require a disruption of, of the traffic. Sometimes there are ways to do things trenchlessly, but I don't think that'll be the case here. I, I think the sewer system, the water mains, particularly the sewer system, needs to be made, made much bigger, and it's going to involve digging up the roadways. And again, that's work that was similar to what was done at the Battery Building, except there we were doing work on Lakeside Avenue and National Avenue, which is not a transit route, and not quite as heavily traveled as, as Main Street. So just so everybody knows, this is the two blocks northeast of the CVS, the downtown CVS property. That's, that's correct. So it starts near the community, across the street from the community house, and it goes down to the intersection with Washington, and just sort of around the corner on Washington. That, that's correct. Right. Was there some reason why you didn't, or this resolution does not envision potentially the other side of Main Street, the other two blocks on the other side? I, I can't say why, why it doesn't, but obviously you can make same, similar arguments for, for that side as we're making here, especially with respect to the infrastructure. So in terms of the actual disruption, like to the road, are we talking about weeks where the traffic would be either halted or impeded? Yes, you would be. And how about the livability of the, or the habitability of the buildings when you start taking the sewer and the water apart? Well, certainly that, that's an impact, well, it doesn't necessarily mean that they won't have sewer water. I, I think it's more of an impact to people traveling through, either, either by vehicle or by car. I mean, they're not going to be subject to no water, or have water shut off for weeks or months while, while, while new facilities are, are installed. But it'd be more of one of, I think, moving through, through Main Street, which would be more of an impact. Okay. And as, as the councilwoman said, we can sort of understand the concept of sewer and water replacement, but in terms of the housing stock, what are the, is there a panoply of, of what that would entail? Everything from painting the outside exterior and knocking down? I, I think that, that all becomes part of, ultimately, what the plan is. What I'm simply stating here is that, two things. One, that there, there is housing stock that, again, goes back to the late eighteen hundreds, to the earlier part of the, of the twentieth century, so certainly is much more than fifty years old. And a rehab program would be overall beneficial to, to the street. My, my house is fifty years old. You're not coming for it, are you? That's for this council to grant. Okay. But, but seriously, so could one of the options be to buy the properties, knock them down, and build new housing stock? You know, I, I think that's, that's all, that's not at this point determined. Okay. Because, and the reason I ask is because we're asking for condemnation powers. So the only reason you would need condemnation powers, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to actually take the property. Well, true, but that doesn't necessarily mean...
But that, that does not necessarily mean, that does not necessarily mean that it would be taking entire property, or taking residential property. There may be other properties, while, while you could do either way, you, for, because of eminent domain, if you needed for utilities, you know, where you needed certain property or easements that you could do, and it would allow you to do it within that. This is, the, part of the problem, and one of the reasons this is so broad, is this is this is so broad, is this is kind of a hodgepodge in terms of what we don't know about this area. We know an awful lot, but we don't know, you know, ultimately, what the solutions are. And we don't know what the opportunities are, quite frankly. There may be opportunities, and that's part of what, one of the reasons that we're looking at. Certainly rehabilitation, and potentially, some parcels perhaps, if they qualify redevelopment.
That corner property close to the CVS has been largely vacant for multiple years. I had asked the question about whether there was, you thought there was remediation involved in these properties. My understanding is that auto body shop, or the vacant, previously operated auto body shop, has some serious environmental remediation issues. Is that your understanding?
I don't know. It certainly wouldn't be surprising if that were to be true, but I can't say with certainty that it is.
I know the community house, which is across the street from that area, has talked about a need for parking, increased parking. Is one of the ideas here to maybe look at that as a garage, that property, to put in a garage?
There's any specific parcel being looked at for anything, but certainly, something like the needs of parking is something that would be certainly considered in the plan. You know, part of putting together, if you get to the point where there's a plan, is determining what the needs are. And I think we all do know that parking is a need down there. So certainly, that's something that can, would be reflected in the plan.
And with that in mind, we did include some of the property that we own in the northerly block that the town owns in part of the redevelopment area, which is the Torrey Corner or Abe Lando Parking Lot.
Right. And the reason I ask is because we're not, we, the council, are not being presented with this grand vision of what might happen. But I just assume that there's some thought in the administration about what the potential end game could be. So that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, that's a good question.
You know, there must be, whoever is talking about this, or maybe, are you talking to any developers?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I think it's fair to say there is not a grand plan. But there is a need. And we're right on the heels of a huge success in the downtown in that area with the Edison Battery Factory project. And it's the logical extension, the logical next step, other than the development around it, is to move down Main Street. So it seems to me that's more of the driving factor here, and the fact that we have, we know we have needs, we have infrastructure needs there. And another good reason for the condemnation in it is potential in it, is if there are properties in there that are contaminated. That is something, because we may have money, access to money that private property don't have, we may, as we have, which we have used in the past, done, have to do a condemnation as part of whatever we're doing on the infrastructure or whatever. So it's really, it's really, right now, the plan, if you will, on a small P plan, is not formed. So, you know, you want to have as many of the tools you can available to you, so that once you do form a plan, you can do what you need to do.
Okay. Just to follow up on that, you mentioned the Edison redevelopment. There's a couple of blocks between Edison redevelopment and this area. One of them is the Edison Museum, and the other one is the CVS property, which is still in the redevelopment area, but has been foreclosed on and is now owned by, I don't know who. I know it changed hands in like the last year. But can you tell us anything about what's going on with that block, that property? Is anything happening?
I don't know of anything going on there yet. I mean, market forces are going to take over. This project is very successful. The whole idea is to create an economy that causes it to move down the block. You know, move wherever it goes, or both up the block for that matter, wherever it goes, if there are obstacles such as our infrastructure there that's going to keep them from going there, we have to address that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, did you have another question?
Actually, I was going to repeat some of the things Mr. LaPorte said, because I had a conversation, so now I'm good.
Okay. Resolution 137-19, resolution authorizing the township to enter into a memorandum of agreement to revise the collective bargaining agreement with the Fire Superior Officers Association for the period-
We have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve 134-19?
No move.
Second.
Sorry about that. Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Sorry about that. 137-19, resolution authorizing the township to enter into a memorandum of agreement to revise the collective bargaining agreement with the Fire Superior Officers Association for the period between January 1st, 2018, through December, I think that should say 31st, 2022. Councilman Krokowiak?
Yes, thank you. Council President, or pro tem, with your leave, I just, there was one issue that Councilwoman Brown brought up on the previous resolution. I just wanted to throw this out. She asked whether the property owners had been notified. And I think the answer was, they're not required to.
They're not required until the public hearing.
Not during the study, right?
Right.
Until the public hearing.
When the study, if, at the planning board, when they have a hearing, that's-
That'll be served.
This is a rather substantial step, even though we're taking it in small steps. Is there any reason why we couldn't send letters to the property owners to tell them that this is going on?
Well, it's going to happen shortly. As soon as it gets scheduled at the planning board, you know, the planning board will send out notifications. So, I mean, you know, they're required to do it, at least 10 days in advance. So I think we'd be stepping on it, or, you know, maybe it'd be-
Be redundant.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just-
It'll be notified.
I wanted to make sure they knew what was potentially going on. Thank you. These are the two proposed labor agreements for our two firefighter unions. And I just wanted to ask a few questions to clarify on the materials that were presented. As you, as most people know, there's been a real issue with retirement healthcare costs within the contract bargaining going on. And I'm sorry, I'm looking for my resolutions. And in these two proposed contracts, the unions are, and just stop me whenever, the unions are giving up any town-provided retirement healthcare benefits for any new hires. Is that correct?
And longevity.
And longevity. Now, I thought it was, one of them is getting longevity added, the officer getting longevity added, I think.
There are a few, there are a number of, that will have an addition of current firefighters who will be getting an additional stipend. And we can talk a little bit why that is. But any new hires will not have longevity.
Okay. So maybe that's a better idea to, for you or someone else, just to talk about the major elements of the two proposed contracts in terms of not only the overall cost, and I know I've asked for that, and I've gotten that, but what were the trade-offs for the healthcare give-up? And what are your estimated savings for the healthcare give-up? And I know it must be hard, because in most cases, it's going to be 25 or 30 years in the future. And even 25, 30 years in the future, is it, do I understand correctly that the town won't be paying any benefits, but the retiree firefighters under this contract would be paying at a discounted rate for the retirement healthcare?
Lenny, let me go through, and as you suggested, and then, and you're not wrong, but maybe I can give you the broad picture of that. In terms of this agreement between the township and our two fire unions, the, I'm sorry, who are here? They are, in essence, identical. There's a couple of small differences, but in the big picture, they're identical. They are five-year contracts with a 0% increase in salaries in year one and two. In year three, four, and five, there are what we call 1.5% splits, which means January 1, they get 1.5%. July 1, they get another 1.5%. So for that year, at the end of the year, their salary's up 3%, but only costs us a little, a little over 2.5% because it's the way the math works out.
With compounding, doesn't, isn't it a little bit more than 2%?
Well, it catches up in year three.
Okay.
And that's when it starts to go up a little bit over.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, over the five-year period, that's 9%, increase over the five years. In addition to that, in year two, there's an increase in the EMT stipend from $3,000 to $4,000, beginning in year two, moving forward. In addition to that, there are changes in health benefit, in health benefits. For existing employees, they will continue to pay Chapter 78 rates for their contributions to employee benefits. We have a few employees that are, that, when Chapter 78 came out, it basically, it said that you had to pay the Chapter 78 rates, or whatever you're paying now, whichever is higher. We now have a few employees that are still on the pain a little bit more because they were on, from the formulas that existed before Chapter 78. This contract will put everybody on Chapter 78. It's, in the big picture, it's a nominal amount, and it puts everybody on the same formulas. And from an administrative point of view, it's going to be much more efficient for us to calculate, rather than going through four or five different calculations on every employee to save for what is, in essence, in total, about $15,000. So that is a change in their, in existing employees' health benefits. Existing employees who are scheduled to contribute to their benefits in retirement, employees that are here today, will not have to pay, except those hired after a date in 2010, May 25th, I think, 2010, will have to pay a minimum of 1.5%. In order to compensate those particular employees that will have to pay, as opposed to the others that don't have to pay anything, those employees will receive an additional 1.5% in year 24 of their longevity, in year 24 of their employment, which will have an impact on their pension in order to allow them to pay, and basically make them whole with the rest of the current employees. Every, any new employee will not be eligible for longevity moving forward. And any new employee will not receive retirement, paid retirement benefits of any type, of any value in retirement.
Not just healthcare, but also retirement benefits?
No, no, no. In retirement, healthcare in retirement.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Healthcare in retirement.
Sorry. Thank you.
Now, the, this is a long-term savings, huge savings for the township. It is a savings in terms of, you know, 25 years from now, when we will no longer be paying any retiree benefits to any employees. We will, or new employees starting now, 25 years out, when they start retiring. We will be saving the longevity in the, beginning in five years as new employees come on. Once they hit five, that's when they will be eligible for longevity. So the township will be saving that. Ultimately, that's about, in today's dollars, about $450,000 a year. So it's, you know, we are, come to an agreement that allows existing employees to transition, set the standards for new employees, and put the township in a position to be much more healthy in the future.
So, for those of you who don't know what longevity is, it's, Mr. Grest, do you have a simple explanation? It's basically, if you're employed, you get that bump up in your pay by a percentage?
Yeah. It's basic, longevity is kind of what it sounds like. The longer you're here, you get an adjustment in your pay. After five years, you get an additional 2%. 10 years, you get another 4%, you get 4%. 15 years, you get 6%. 20 years, you get 8%. And at 24, you get 10%.
So on the contract with Resolution 137-19, you project a cost of almost, a little over $785,000 over the five years, minus the future health benefit savings?
Correct.
So, I think you-
And minus, and minus the longevity savings.
Right. But-
That's an, you know, that's the cost over five years.
Right. But then, the, how are you calculating the healthcare savings in 25 or 30 years?
I've done it a thousand ways. The easiest way to understand, and most of them come in the same, end up in the same general area. The easy way to think about this is that current employees, when they retire, these employees, when they would retire, will be paying approximately a third, would be contributing approximately a third towards their health benefits. And then, when you, after, once the transition occurs, they will, we will be paying nothing. So we go from paying 2/3 to zero. So it more than, it makes up its significant savings. And having said that, you know, I'm not factoring, once you factor in inflation and things of that nature, the numbers just multiply out dramatically.
Okay. So, is it safe to say that the cost of this contract that you project at a little over $785,000, it reflects in part that you've given additional benefits to the union in order to obtain the concessions going out?
That'd be our position. I'm sure that would not necessarily be their position.
Okay. Can you tell me why the major factors in the difference between the two contracts? One, you project a cost of, like you said, a little over $785,000, and the other one, it's almost $942,000.
Body count, just a different number of people. I mean, there's other factors, but that's the major factor.
So how, how might, the council approving these two contracts tonight, how might potentially that affect what's going on with the police unions in terms of, they have a different position on-
Well, we're really not going to discuss publicly other units-
Right, okay.
And our strategies with them, that's just-
I'm not looking into that. I'm just, for example, if, it's been a while that you've been negotiating, you haven't come to an agreement with the police. I think the police have an offer to us on the table. But what happens if we can't reach an agreement with them, and we go to arbitration? Does the fact that the fire unions have given up these healthcare, retirement healthcare benefits, does that have any sort of-
Yeah.
But does it have legal impact?
This is strategy.
Why would we talk about negotiation strategy in a public meeting?
I'm not talking about strategy. I'm talking about what the law says. What does the law say about-
There is no law. The arbitrator decides in arbitration what he wants to decide. There's no law that says what he can and what he can't decide. He's an arbit, that's why he's called an arbitrator, because he listens to all the evidence and then makes his own decision. There is no law that governs him.
Okay. So, as far as we can tell, there's no legal impact of what this does in terms of your negotiations with- negotiations with the police unions?
No.
Okay. And there's no law that impacts what happens in arbitration with regard to these... To this issue about healthcare benefits and the fact that there's, I don't know whether you call it precedent or whatever, that you've got some unions that gave up a particular...
This contract... These contracts stand alone. Pretty simple.
That's all the questions I have.
Question. So, obviously, both of these contracts have been voted on by both memberships and approved these contracts.
Correct.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Excuse me one minute. John, you mentioned that there were slight differences between the two. Can you be a little more specific? I mean, the percentages are the same?
They're the same contracts. The exact same contracts. One is a little more than the other because of the amount of bodies, that's all.
Oh. Is there a motion to approve 137-19? Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Castellino?
Are we voting for both 137 and 138?
We're voting just on 137-19 right now.
Thank you.
I'm going to honor the membership. I'm going to vote yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
My vote is neither an honor or dishonor for the negotiations that took place with the fire unions in our township, but I'm voting no.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 138-19, resolution authorizing the township to enter into a memorandum of agreement to revise the collective bargaining agreement with the Fireman's Mutual Benevolent Association Local 28 for the period between January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2022. Should I go right into a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve 138-19?
Some.
Is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading. 2565-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Section 3.2 of the revised general ordinances of the township zone map. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Any comments or questions on this resolution... On this, oh, sorry, ordinance 2565-19? I'll just let you know from during the reexamine of the master plan, there were parcels that were found to have a split zone, B1 business and industry, and the planning board unanimously decided that it should be... They should be all-inclusive and be consistent with the zone in the area. That's what this ordinance does, instead of having a split zone on each parcel. Anyone have a comment or question? Seeing none? Close public? No?
I'm sorry.
Any colleagues accept this?
No.
Is there a motion to approve 2565-19?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2568-19, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-20, Stop Intersections of the Revised General Ordinances of the Town of West Orange, Oak Ridge Road, and Hazel Avenue. Is there a motion to approve on...
Some.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing. Any comments or questions on this ordinance?
Stop sign.
A stop sign at Oak Ridge and Hazel Avenue. Thank you. Seeing none? Comments, questions? Colleagues?
No.
No. Is there a motion to adopt 2568-19?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2569-19, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, 65 Watson Avenue, 41 Ridgehurst Road, 16 Mountain Avenue, 16 Glenin Place, and 100 Swain Place. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. I'm on my way inside, so I'll be right in.
Okay.
Come on in.
I am.
Public hearing. Just in time. Any questions on the restricted parking zones at the addresses listed? Seeing none? Any comments or questions, colleagues?
No.
No. Is there a motion to adopt 2569-19?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino? Did he disconnect his power phone?
He was in the elevator with no reception.
Well, he recused himself at the last council meeting for 2570. We don't really have to wait around for that, do we?
Unless he says it, I have to... Oh, that's true, yeah. Yeah, you know what? That's true, yeah.
But we were waiting on 2569.
Correct. Oh, well, we could go back to that. No, we're in the middle of a vote. Oh. We have to... We'll just give him a minute.
Shouldn't be...
Let's give him a minute.
It should be less than a minute. It's just in the parking lot.
Yeah. Unless he stops in the minute.
First, I have to lead to a pit stop.
Yes, Jerry, for his vote. He's calling back too late. Hello?
No, I didn't answer. I'm hung up.
No. Are you stretching? Okay.
The Tammy was raising her hand.
Are you stretching?
Yeah or nay, please?
Restricted parking.
There's the voice.
We're waiting for your vote. Restricted zones on handicap parking, 65 Watson, 41 Ridgehurst, 16...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance 25... Oh, no, Joe's not here. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I know we're supposed to go into executive session. Can we do that before we do the 2570?
Totally up to you guys. Oh, yes.
I mean, I know that would be helpful for 2570.
Absolutely. That's what we do.
That's my recommendation.
But I'm thinking we can introduce the ordinances on first reading?
Introduce, then go into executive, and then come back.
As soon as Joe comes back.
Well, we have people waiting. I mean, we can hold...
We have two ordinances on first reading.
Yeah, but I would skip over the first readings because they've been waiting all night. I mean, they're only here for the 2570.
There's no discussion. It's just changing.
Okay.
So, we're going to hold off on this and go into executive session.
I just don't...
Okay. So, we're not going to...
What?
So, we're not going to...
Yeah. We're going to go to executive session. We have a 2570.
Okay. So, we're not going to...
So, I'm going to make a motion?
Wonderful.
Okay.
So, if we introduce it, are we going to go into executive before we introduce it?
Yes.
Yes.
Because then you have a public conference.
No. No. It's executive session. We're not going to go into executive session. I wanted to introduce the two on first reading.
You want to bypass that and... Okay. Do we have to finish the vote for 2569?
We did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
The executive session's going to be very short, so...
Okay. Yeah. So, we'll just do that?
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Can I make a motion to go into executive session? Second. Motion to recess?
You already passed?
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah. Okay. Motion to recess?
You come back.
And we'll come back. Do I have a motion to recess? Hello?
Motion, yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're good. And to return?
There you go. Some.
Is there a second? To return to the meeting?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Where are we on?
We're going to pick up where we left off. We left off with ordinances on second and final reading, and this is ordinance 2570-19, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a license agreement with Pleasant Valley Productions for use and operation of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center. What the ordinance authorizes, the township to enter into a license agreement with Pleasant Valley Productions, a nonprofit entity, to use and operate the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center pursuant to the local lands and building law. The term of the license agreement is three years for a nominal annual fee of $1.
Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
Huh? How? Some. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
He's recused.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like, say it's used.
Okay. Public hearing.
Any comments or questions also on this ordinance?
Ms. Karneval, just before you start the clock, I'd just like to address what happened in the back earlier, and I know there's not a lot of time, so I just, if you would bear with me. There was a township employee in the back harassing several people, and then there's an employee of the Degnan House who was literally threatening people. And instead of coming to order, I shouted for the police chief twice to get his assistance because I was being attacked. And instead of coming to order, what ended up happening was the business administrator came towering over me, shouting at me to stop speaking. I was asking for the assistance of the police chief in getting two menacing and threatening people to come to order. I just want you to know, that's what happened in your chambers, and it's been captured on videotape. So, I don't know where the gavel was and why it didn't strike, but you saw what was happening.
I did not. I'm sorry, I did not.
In any event...
I actually thought something happened to Mickey for motto. That's what I thought happened.
Fair enough. And in any event, you know, it's terribly upsetting, and I thank you for the extension of the courtesy of the time. Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. You've heard me ask you to table, and this is the reason why. 99 pages of social affair permits were provided via an Oprah request, and if you took the time to review them and you took the time to review the law, the ABC handbook that I cited to gave you the exact page for, you saw that no profiting could occur, and it did. You saw that the applications were made to the state, then sent to the township to be verified by the township, to the police department, and to the township secretary... I'm sorry, clerk. Somehow, each and every one of those permits was issued, and there was profiting off of those... Off of the liquor sale. The liquor sale was supposed to be fundraising. It was supposed to be fundraising for NJAI, and instead, what happened was a for-profit organization that was hired in order to run OSPAC profited from that. Now, the individual who filed the application, former law enforcement, as he professes to be, read and certified to, he being the individual responsible for the location and having certified to the fact that he had the authority to do what he did. And then, his organization is the one that profited off of the alcohol. That's egregious. It's egregious. And it happened, 99 pages, I believe there's six pages per application, which means that there's at least, I don't know, my math is terrible, 16 or 17 applications that you have before you. The scope of the Oprah request was from 2017 to present. I don't know what happened prior to that. And I don't know how you, in good conscience, can move forward with figuring out who can run OSPAC until you know what happened so that you can be sure that the licensing agreement does not create the same deficiency. You have several people who were either appointed by the mayor or asked to serve and served who also enjoy appointments to other organizations within the town. There's supposed to be minutes. The minutes are supposed to be reviewed by the business administrator of the town, and the business administrator of the town is annually supposed to look at the financials. Had the business administrator of the town done his job every time he did not receive minutes, every time he did not receive the financials, he had 15 days in which to make sure that they came in. The township could have gone in, the town could have inspected what was happening, but instead, we trusted because the person managing OSPAC was also a person trusted by the town to handle public information for the town. So in addition to benefiting from the contract from the town for public information, the individual is benefiting with the contract with NJAI for running OSPAC and then divesting the assets, divesting the profits from OSPAC so that the sound system that you heard they needed could have probably been afforded from all that money that was just taken away from OSPAC. I don't know how any of you in good conscience can vote in favor of an ordinance that then can only be repealed. Isn't it curious to you why it's not a resolution like every other time before? Isn't it curious to you why we're investing in an insider and that's not been disclosed to the public that the fire chief's sister and her organization is going to reap a benefit from finally finding a home? I think that's a paraphrase, maybe not a direct quote. Finally finding a home at OSPAC. How do you permit a nonprofit designed to provide community theater to then also run and manage an organization? And how do you split the funding? How do you figure out the financials? How do you figure out the in-kind derived benefit from that sort of a relationship? And why can't you put out an RFP and create a situation where that fine program, I have no doubt that program is a perfectly...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Going to close public comment and ask my colleagues? Any comments or questions?
Yes, actually.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Ms. Bennett, again, thank you for your advocacy, and the information that you put forth, it is welcome, it is received, it is read, it is considered. And I had a conversation today with our attorney, our mayor, both attorneys, Mr. Moon and Mr. Trank, after I spoke to the mayor. Obviously, there's a concern about the history of the functioning or lack thereof of OSPAC. Here's where I am. We have something that belongs to the town that can be very successful. I've no doubt that that can happen. I, I like to learn from the mistakes made in the past and move forward, making sure we don't make them again. This license agreement, and I think my council colleagues can vouch for how many times it was revised up until five forty-five this evening. Each one of us had input, requests, and discussions. I proposed to the mayor, and I asked him to hear me out before he gave me his opinion, that we create a board comprised of a council liaison, a member of the rec department who is directly associated with the events that happened at OSPAC, the arts council, because they're the arts council, why should they not have a voice at the table, and perhaps a, an appointee that is a consensus from the council. It is true that it is a monumental task to undertake, particularly in such a short amount of time. I realize that we don't have a present business plan, the lease agreement does require one to be submitted within thirty days. I have every confidence, and I realize that there was a board initially formed, and for whatever reason, it did not function, it was defunct. But I think that every colleague at this, on this council, with the exception of Councilwoman Guarino, because he has to be recused, is committed to making sure that that does not happen again. I don't want the mistakes of the past to hinder what in the next couple of weeks could be progress, could be community gathering, could be community building. By having the arts council on, on the, on a board, they can assist in seeking out other nonprofit organizations or putting on shows for themselves that benefit our town. So, when I spoke to the mayor, he listened and was supportive, and I appreciated that And I had a conversation with my council colleagues, who I hope will support this modification. Now, I understand it cannot be added to the present ordinance, correct, because it causes a substantial change. What we did do to ensure that we will form a board is included in the licensing agreement, where until this board is formed, and it's not going to be, and I trust that my council colleagues will agree with me, it's not going to be six months out or even three months out. In the meantime, we serve as an assistant to the OSPAC, to Pleasant Valley Theater, and to one another, to make sure that the checks and balances are upheld. That is a commitment. I, I, I am not one to throw out the baby with the bathwater. That's just not how I function. I like to look at where we were, look at the mistakes that we made, and figure out how we can improve them. Whatever happened in the past, I'm not gonna say is in the past, that's being taken care of, but as far as I'm concerned, we have a responsibility to make sure that we respond and represent. And I think that not allowing OSPAC to function, it's May. You've got but such a short window of time to put together events, that is no easy task. I, I, could we have put it up until, you know, another month? And then where are we in July, August? I, I don't think that that's fair to the community. I, I have faith in, in this council, the way it is presently constructed, to make sure that we hold each other accountable. And I, I see the head nodding, I understand the, the distrust, you know, I completely understand the distrust, and I hope that we can effectively persuade change in that area. We also looked at the licensing agreement, I don't know when was the last time you looked at the licensing agreement, because it was changed at five forty-five, but there was language in here that was also of concern, which was changed, where it spoke about the exclusive use. It's not an exclusive use, it's a non-exclusive use, which benefits us from having, with having other organizations put their performances on and use OSPAC. I am satisfied, that doesn't mean I'm not, I don't have concerns, but I am satisfied that the changes that were made in this lease agreement, the fact that we are working on an ordinance, which Mr. Moon actually drafted probably at six o'clock this evening, that we will put this through, and we will have a board that will be effectively accountable for OSPAC, and it's happening. So, yes, I've heard, yes, I've read, I've done my research, I've participated, and I am, I, I look forward to working with my town council colleagues in creating a board that's going to have accountability. Thank you, that's all for me.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah?
Uh-huh.
Anyone?
So, Kate Baker was here earlier, she made a statement, not an easy task to run OSPAC, volunteer board, spent a lot of your lifetime, multiple hours, putting time and effort into it. Anyone who has run a board or been on any kind of boards, you do, you put your passion into it, your energy, but at the same time, you know, you have a, with this case, an ordinance to follow, rules to follow, accusations are BMA, we don't have an investigation back yet. So that's where we took a break, we don't have any investigation back yet, but one is being done. So we shouldn't just make assumptions, we should wait for results to come back. Camille, I want to thank you today, we had a long conversation, your reputation with the Pleasant Valley Productions and your board, your board is here too, so thank you for coming down and being present this evening. And you know it's a monumental task, I don't think you're naive about it, I think you know what you're signing, what you're signing up for, if we approve it this evening, and you know, there's fundraising involved, as my colleague had mentioned, there's production involved. I think where things always, you know, just being observer of OSPAC over the years, we need to work on the sub-license, so when we sub it out, and you have other entities come in, and that has been tightened up with the rules, thank you, Mr. Moon, it was a long day. And I appreciate all the edits on the, on the license agreement today, to tighten it up. And again, when language is tightened and there aren't any gray areas, it's easier for everyone to follow. So I know you'll be providing us with the lease aid programs annually, and we'll look at the sub-license agreement and to see how that will function and operate. Mr. Keo, I was on the phone with him today as well, and I know he was pleased that you have reached out, your group, you have reached out to him, and to work hand in hand with the recreation department, which, which is important. I believe he, he worked last year with the group that was up there last year, so he's always very creative with ideas, and I do agree, it's a community center, I know Hispanic night, Latin night is always a big hit, that needs to be planned, and I, I know Mr. Keo's been pitching in with that, and, and once we move forward with this, that can move forward. So I'm excited to hear what plans you will have in the next thirty days, and come back with us with the business plan, because again, you know, you, you can only give us so much, or actually technically, you can't give us anything at all, because you haven't been approved yet. So I think we have tightened this up, that we can move forward. I do, and I, I do believe that we could have some oversight, I like to see a, which is in here also, annual report that you come and present to the council, like the Downtown Alliance does, and the Human Relations Commission does. So you come down to us, when you hand their report, you bring your reports to us, and, and I know you were, you didn't have any issue with that, and being, I know you want to be very transparent, so these are all great things. I'm not gonna, it's getting late, keep us here too long, but I feel that what we crafted today, with the changes that are made with this new license agreement, covers a lot of the issues and concerns of the public. I think also keeps everybody in their lanes, and everybody knows what they're, they're signing up for. In regards to sub-license agreement, that's another area that even you had stated, we need to be consistent with, and present us with a document that you would present to sub-licenses. And, you know, when you, when we have those kind of documents and we tighten items up, I think it, it just makes life easier for all involved. And thank you to the legal department, because you, you worked very hard today, and my colleagues for catching up on the, the reading with this, because again, we like to get information ahead of time, and, but we were able to get this tweak between all of us here. So thank you, Mr. Moon.
Absolutely. Mr. Moon, if you will just explain, because I had this question for you. Why during the last council meeting did we have a resolution on the agenda that then turned into an ordinance? Can you please explain that?
So generally, contracts are approved through resolutions, sort of an act. Leasing and, you know, purchase of real property, it's governed under a separate statute. Quite honestly, the two thousand and thirteen license agreement arguably should have been an ordinance, in my opinion. When I was asked to review the sort of mechanism toward, I looked at the land, so the governing statute, and I said, it's probably, it, it governs leases, but license agreements is close enough that I thought the best way to do it is under ordinance to be in compliance with the state statute. That's basically what it is. Specifically, when we're talking about a lease to a nonprofit entity for nominal amount. If this was a lease for an actual amount to a business or something like that, it would have, it would have had to gone this sort of procurement process, because this is a nonprofit that's gonna be operating. There are requirements under this statute that they're gonna have to meet. One of the things you'll note is that there's, all the reporting, the stuff that was added to the agreement were conditions that are established in statute, that we're, we're sort of adding in now, because there's a governing statute now that apply. So that's basically what it was really. It was more, it was my sort of cautious reading of the governing statute that said, I think we should do it by ordinance rather than resolution, nothing.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, Council President, I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman?
So, Council President tonight. Just one other item too, in regards to the management and the schedule of OSPAC.
Spelled out, yes.
Would be, would be kept, and working with Mr. Keo and the recreation department by Pleasant Valley Productions. So they'll keep the schedule, and then Mr. Keo will work with them in regards to the schedule. But, okay, I just wanted to add that in.
Spelled out in here?
Yeah, spelled out in here.
Yes.
I'd like to put my vote, and maybe our vote, into context. The debate on the best way to maximize the benefit of the township-owned OSPAC to the people of West Orange, I've been part of that debate since two thousand and twelve. To understand my vote, I think it's important you know what's gone before. I'm not going to reargue the previous iteration, except to say that I was vocal regarding my concerns about the lack of specificity of the license agreement, the fact that there were no limits on how much could be charged for services, and potentially insufficient township oversight. Fast forward. The license agreement expired March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Not only was that more than a year ago, and not only did the administration never mention this at all to the council, but the entire OSPAC program proceeded outside of the legal limits of the license agreement. Several weeks ago, Facebook posts became, Facebook posts began to allege wrongdoing at OSPAC by the management firm, New Jersey Arts Incubator. And I want to make it absolutely clear that it has absolutely nothing to do with Pleasant Valley Productions. And at the same time, the administration began the process of recommending to the council to appoint Pleasant Valley Productions. At the same time, I began trying to get information about what had been going on at OSPAC. I thought it likely that from the little we knew, my concerns had been realized. I believe that we first needed to know what happened at OSPAC, and to determine how that might have arisen from the license agreement and township supervision. If we found that these elements were linked, we have the opportunity now to make sure we got the licensing and the supervision right. I don't know anything about whatever investigation's going on, other than what was talked about at the last council meeting. We had a little bit of discussion in the executive session, I can't say anything about it, except I don't know what the investigation is about, I can tell you that right now. But let me just tell you what is known publicly. None of these are confirmed facts or anything, but there are documents up online. Let me just tell you. There's an email dated October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to Mayor Parisi, from someone whose name is redacted from the email, who identifies himself as the treasurer of NJAI for two years. He said he met with the mayor, quote, "last week Thursday," end quote, which indicates October eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, talking about some unnamed festival at OSPAC. This person had, quote, "some concerns regarding, quote, 'existing operations of the current board of directors, as well as a background check conducted on me and my business without my permission for no apparent reason,'" end quote. The writer said he received a text message from Susan Anderson regarding some issue that was redacted, that, quote, "raised additional concerns," end quote. She sent an email from John De Mars, who's a lieutenant in the, the police bureau, with a CC to a couple of other police, and mentioned David Perk regarding the social affairs permit for redacted. Then it says, "As mentioned last Thursday, I want to sit and meet, quote, 'with the above-mentioned detectives, chief, and administration conducting the OSPAC investigation,'" end quote. Quote, "I was appointed the treasurer of the board approximately two years ago, and to date have not seen the books," end quote. We also know about ninety-nine pages of social affairs permits that was posted online. All of this, again, has nothing to do with the investigation, this is what we know. If you go to the state licensing handbook, it says, "A social affair permit allows an organization operating solely for civic, religious, educational, charitable, fraternal, social, or recreational purposes, and not for private gain, to apply for a special permit to serve alcoholic beverages at a fundraising event," end quote. And then on the first, from the first, a permit which is, was, which was obtained by an Open Public Records Act request, and was given by the, by the township. It says, "Social affair permit application should be endorsed by the chief of police or designee and the municipal clerk of the town where the affair is to be held." Someone has posted, posted what appears to be a valid receipt showing that Black Star Communications has the recipient of some of the funds of one of these permits. That same person has posted what appear to be indications that Black Star Communications also got vendor application fees. I'm just telling you what's online, what's public, I don't know anything about the investigation, all I know is what's online and public. Black Star Communications is, as far as I know, a business that's operated by Susan Anderson, who's the former town public information officer and executive producer with New Jersey Arts Incubator. So as soon as this stuff started getting posted, I know, by the way, one of the people that actually used OSPAC last year, sent me a document, and he said he got it from OSPAC, that charged him ten thousand dollars for a single-day event.
Did he say he paid that bill?
Please just let me finish. Please just let me finish. As soon as all this stuff started appearing, Ms. Anderson filed three quick Open Public Records Act requests targeting my communications, asking about my emails with Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross, the legal department, regarding Susan Anderson, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross, about NJAI and OSPAC, on and on, going back to 2016. She also mentioned something about extra-duty solutions, invoice with extra-duty solutions, which is the function that we have scheduling police officers for off-duty, off-duty work. Another one, that was filed on April 13th, she filed another one on April 17th, asking for my emails in response to the previous Oprah request. And then the next day, on April 18th, she wanted to have all my emails between me and Lieutenant De Mars regarding OSPAC, NJAI, and ABC permits. She wanted all this information going back to June of 2018. She also wanted anything that had to do with Black Star Entertainment, Susan Anderson, Back in 2016, I asked for the materials that NJAI was supposed to be providing on a regular basis to the administration, the financial information, and also the sub-licensing agreements. Here's what it says in the licensing agreement. Quote, "Township shall be provided with non-audited financial statements not less than annually, which shall provide a full accounting of all income, assets, expenses, liabilities, grants, and other financial information," end quote. Quote, "All outside community users will be subject to the attached rules and regulations, and will sign a sub-license agreement with licensee covering such usage on reasonable terms." So, what did we get? Even though the license agreement says, Section 4, licensee shall use the premises for a performing arts facility with all rights to indoor and outdoor usage of the building in furtherance of NJAI's mission, and not for private use. Also says in Section 6, "All sub-licenses must be not-for-profit organizations authorized to do business in the state of New Jersey." So, what do we see in what I get back? I get a list of all what NJAI says were the sub-license agreements. One of them is identified on, as on August 6th, 2014, it's almost five years ago, quote, "private party," end quote. In the same list, we get two references to something called Group SEB in August 2013 and August 29th, 2014. Now, if you Google Group SEB, you'll find a very large consumer products company based I also have, before the NJAI website went down, was taken down, I don't know what happened, pictures on the OSPAC website showing a wedding at the facility. Be happy to show you those pictures, too. I doubt that was a nonprofit use of the property. I don't know too much about the accuracy of the numbers that were presented, but in January, in a financial statement in what they filed, covering operations from January to November of 2014, it reported program service revenue, which is probably where the OSPAC revenues came from, of almost $68,000 in 2014, not even the full year. That was up in one year from the previous year, 2013, up almost $33,000. In the same financial statement, it talks about rent in 2014 of $8,200, up from zero the previous year. Now, I thought that was a little unusual, because OSPAC, as I just read you, had the use of that building. NJAI had the use of that building. What in the world were we, meaning the taxpayers of West Orange, paying $8,200 for rent for somebody that had a free use of the building? So, I kept digging, I kept asking. I'm not really that concerned about the investigation, that'll take care of itself, and we'll eventually find out. But I did want to know what's been going on for the last six or seven years. On April 17th, I asked Mr. Gross for the extra-duty solutions invoice that was referenced in one of the Susan Anderson's Oprah requests, and the documentation for it, as well as any other invoices referring, referencing work to NJAI or OSPAC. I didn't hear back, then after I heard, I sent a follow-up, he wrote, quote, "I have provided legal with all documentation and requested guidance regarding distribution. As soon as I receive such guidance, I will distribute accordingly." Again, mind you, this is from an Open Public Records Act request, it's not any inside knowledge. On April 29th, I asked for, the administration for, when the previous license was not renewed, or when it supposedly expired. I asked for a list of the officers and directors of Pleasant Valley Productions. I asked, I asked if Ms. Camille Vecchio de Lorenzo was related to Fire Chief Vecchio. I also asked about other familial relationships between Pleasant Valley Productions and town, the township's present or past employees, contractors, or vendors. I'll just point out that on the license agreement that we're asked to approve tonight, the two signatories from Pleasant Valley Productions are Camille Vecchio de Lorenzo, the president, and Elizabeth Vecchio, secretary. I assume they're related. But, all this list of stuff I'm giving you that I asked for, I've never gotten. I asked about any investigation of OSPAC or its managers in the last 10 years and documentation for it. I asked for Lieutenant De Mars' activities with OSPAC. I asked for a red-line version of the proposed license agreement compared with the existing one. I want you to remember that, because I've had to ask at least four times, I think maybe five, I've never gotten that. A comparison between the license agreement from 2013 with the one that's proposed now. I asked for all the financial statements that NJAI provided. I asked how much revenue OSPAC received under the license agreement, and asked for any communications from the administration to the council about the investigation. May 9th, I asked the administration to please send the council red-line versions of the proposed and current OSPAC license agreement, and other proposed ordinance, and current resolution that authorized the license agreement, which I believe is Resolution 6013. Also asked, would you please advise on why the previous authorization of the OSPAC license was a resolution, and the proposed authorization is an ordinance? I asked that on May 9th, five days ago. Not getting any, anything back, I filed an Oprah request. I wanted to know everything I could about this email that's, that is from October 2018 to Mayor Parisi. Haven't gotten anything back on that. I filed another Oprah request for all of Mr. Sayers' communications relating to the operation and management of OSPAC from 2013 to 2019, anything having to do with the licensing, or complaints, or allegations, or investigations, ABC social affairs permits, plus from anybody who he might have delegated this responsibility to. I emailed Mr. Sayers, asking for info on the Parisi email and its relation to the pending investigation. Pending investigation was what the town attorney, Richard Trank, said at the last council meeting. And explore how that activity might be related to the license agreement and to administration supervision. Same day, I asked Mr. Sayers for all of the NJAI's board meeting minutes, resolutions, and other actions that were supposed to be provided to him under the license agreement within five days of them happening. On May 10th, I asked for specific information about Pleasant Valley Productions' experience managing facilities such as OSPAC. On May 14th, I asked again for the red-line versions from 2013 with those proposed now. Not getting that, last night, I went ahead and did my own comparison. And what I found, compared to the 2013 license agreement with the one that existed last night before, get this, five revisions. Five revisions for the license agreement from last night to a few minutes before our meeting started today. Here's what it does. It drops the profit-sharing provision that was in the previous license agreement. It significantly reduces the required financial reporting by the entity. It deletes the requirement to provide the business administrator all board meeting minutes, resolutions, and other actions within five days. It eliminates the requirement that both the mayor and the council are allowed a non-voting liaison member of the board. Ms. Silvestri, you asked that question, you still haven't gotten an answer, all I can say is, I forgot. And I will be kicking myself until I leave this council for not doing that, because it may have made a difference. But this new license agreement eliminates it, so you don't have to ask that question It started to delete the provision that the entity signing the sub-license agreement to use the facility does not have to be a nonprofit. When I posted that last night, we got a, got a revised version of the license agreement this morning, and guess what? That was changed. That's back now. It deletes the provision that the management entity inform the township of any use of the premises by third parties. It adds a provision that after the three-year license term, the entity can continue to manage the facility on a month-to-month basis with absolutely no ending date. I pointed out that, curiously, there was one provision that proposed that was rather salacious. It said, "Programming content shall be family-oriented according to the prurient interests of the community as determined by the township business administrator and OSPAC." Now, Merriam-Webster defines that term, "prurient," as marked by or arousing an immoderate or unwholesome interest or desire, especially marked by sexual desire." That was also taken out in the 9:30 a.m. version this morning. So, I guess technically, I've had some impact on the licensing agreement. The proposed license agreement maintains the provision that all sub-licensing entities using the facility pay all out-of-pocket expenses of the licensee without any restriction or allowance for review or appeal by the township. As I mentioned earlier, I have a document from a sub-licency at OSPAC last year that was charged $10,000 for a single-day use. I'll also point out that the license agreement has no provision having to do with how an operating theater group, which is what's being proposed to hire to manage the facility, can use the facility in compliance with nonprofit regulations. For example, the group will certainly receive a benefit if it stages a production without having to pay for the use of a facility. But there's absolutely no address of that in the license agreement. So, getting back to the license agreement. We got this new license agreement at 9:30 this morning, and it appears to reflect that somebody's reading Facebook, so that's good. Then in the afternoon, starting at 3:27 p.m. and ending at 4:09, what appeared to be three different versions of the license agreement and rules and regulations, plus an email at 5:03, this is, this is the evening of the council meeting, from Mr. Moon, that he was working on yet more revisions. And then we got the latest revision at 5:46. That's four versions in two hours and 20 minutes, plus another one this morning at 9:30. Now, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I think this is a terrible, terrible way to try to put together a license agreement in, in this atmosphere. Which brings us to tonight. I've heard talk about mistakes of the past. We don't know what the mistakes of the past are. Take it from me. I make way too many mistakes. I made a bunch tonight. So, I'm keenly aware of the need to learn from many mistakes, and I think this is another opportunity that we are passing by. Clearly, the administration wants to move ahead without the benefit of the results of the investigation, and an analysis of what has happened, and to incorporate those lessons learned into the next iteration. And I remind you, this is now the third time we have appointed a manager of OSPAC without competitive bidding. Now, to my mind, if you can find three people that you think are capable of running the OSPAC facility, that sounds like there's a market out there. We're what, 12 miles from Broadway and the music capital of the world, and we don't do competitive bidding? I just, I just find that just silly. And therefore, I'm voting no tonight, with the hopes that this proposal can be defeated and significantly improved with the input of more information and more contribution from council members. Thank you, council president.
So, councilman, numerous times during your comments, you said that NJAI had nothing to do with the current agreement. I think between everything that you just stated, and everything I want to reiterate that I said at the last council meeting, for all of those reasons, I want to move forward with an organization that has been in existence for numerous years. And I believe that the new contract addresses the event accountability, I believe it addresses the financial accountability in provisions that have been added. Yes, it may have been at the last moment, but we have them in front of us, and through conversations, reading everything that came through, I believe all of those, the provisions that are listed in here, address the concerns you've raised. The county will continue its investigation, and, again, it has nothing to do with Pleasant Valley Production. You know, you mentioned two sisters that signed off on that. Anthony happens to have another sister, who happens to be my pediatrician, who was a pediatrician long before he was ever a fire chief. I'm not. What I'm saying is that they're all professional in their capacity. I agree with my colleague about creating a board, though they have a great team here already. And as you mentioned, the West Orange Hispanic Foundation always has an annual event there, the West Orange Arts Council, absolutely. Luna Stage is part of this conversation. When my colleague mentioned that the contract had expired, the Recreation Department did take over last year by having family-oriented movies there. So, the Rec Department can be part of that council liaison. And a musical component, though, I don't know your team, you may already have that musical component that the former operator, Kate Baker, mentioned. She talked about community partnership, and from the comments that Camille made at our last council meeting, I believe that that's where, where you lie, in creating these community What else do I want to say? Something, I just made a couple of other notes, that comments that were made about having a month-to-month contract. We already did that for numerous months with reliable wood, just thinking that we'd do that when the contract expires. And I mentioned that the Recreation Department did take over last summer. When Camille did speak at our last council meeting, she said her priority would be to fundraise, that that is the priority, and to seek grants. And I want you to know that last year, I had 25 people on a committee, we submitted an application for a $1 million Bloomberg grant. We were not awarded that, but we did meet all of last year, but we can resurrect that and, and work on it again. So, I believe the new contract does address, as I said, I dress, it addresses in provision number 27, it addresses the accountability of the events, and the accountability of financial provision. My vote would be yes. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman, I just-
Councilwoman, I just want to just clarify one point
Please.
that my colleague made. And, you know, we take your concerns, we input them into this ordinance, but just because there was a lot of action today with this, I was on the phone, Mr. Tranque, last week. I mean, you just want to go there, that this was just done because you posted something on Facebook. I haven't been on Facebook in weeks. So, you know, we do our due diligence. And today was the first day I was working from home as opposed to out doing loan closings. So again, I mean, we all make our statements, but I appreciate Mr. Moon for you going back and forth. I don't know what you could explain why there was those changes made when the ordinance originally, or the resolution first came out, and a lot of items were deleted? Because I had asked that last week.
Yeah.
And I just think, I don't know, you explain it.
I will just say this. I don't think it's my place to talk about specific conversations I've had with individual council members. But I will say that there were concerns that were raised at various times, and I worked as much as I could to incorporate those, as well as, you know, communicating with the proposed vendor to sort of try to satisfy people's concerns, as well as making sure that the incoming vendor will be on board with the proposed changes as well. Yes, a lot of them were last minute. That's just the way that the timing worked of it.
Council President, can I just add? Since Pleasant Valley Theater Group is here, and in all fairness, Camille, we had a conversation as well at the 18th hour, right? Because we were making these changes, and I gave Camille a call and told her about my proposition with respect to the board. One of the things in the licensing, in the lease agreement, talks about the sub-leasing being approved by the board. That, to me, adds accountability to the township directly. But I also want to just be clear that there is no attempt, or the desire for, when the board is formed, there is no desire to infringe on any artistic, you know, abilities or endeavors, that you have artistic autonomy. We just want oversight and input for accountability in order to be able to reestablish trusts of our residents, you know? Rightfully so. They need to, you know, feel how they feel. We all had the same concerns. You don't sit alone in that area. We all had the same concerns, which is why we participated in making the changes that we made. And again, I do, I'm appreciative of the willingness of the administration to understand that this was a need for us to have. So I want to thank Camille. I'm sure it was the last-minute rambling that you had to tell your board, and to your board, thank you for understanding that this is something that we need to do. As far as waiting for an investigation to go on, I am not an attorney, but my husband has been in practice for over 30 years, and investigations can go on forever. I don't think it was prudent to wait until the determination of investigation. I am satisfied that I understand, without having the investigation before me, that there were some lapses in accountability. And that, as far as I'm concerned, should be remedied with this proposed change. So thank you, Camille, and to the board of Pleasant Valley.
Welcome. Hey, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to adopt 2570-19?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes. And welcome. Continued success.
Ordinance on first reading, 2571-19, and ordinance amending Chapter 5, Sections 25.3, 4, 5, 15, 20, and 25 of the revised general ordinances, massage businesses. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2572-19, and ordinance authorizing the office, I'm sorry, the offer of private sale of the property at block 175.08, Lot 7, on the township of West Orange tax map to the adjacent property owners pursuant to local lands and building law. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
I do have council discussion. If you will allow me, in this late hour, to bring this up, I had a conversation with council, as well as some of my colleagues. I want us to have a conversation about having working meetings in advance of presenting us with agendas. I know that some things are unavoidable at the last minute with respect to changes, but I'd like the council to have a discussion on, you know, obviously not a quorum, but working meetings in advance with the administration so that there is an understanding before we get here, and there is not an appearance of scrambling or, you know, jamming things down, you know, the agenda quickly. So that's just something that I want us to consider approaching the administration with, and I'd like your support.
Councilwoman, I'll just say that when I was council president last time around, I agree. They call them workshops. I think it ended up being what we consider pending matters, and didn't really turn out to be the workshop that I was thinking that it would be. So I would revisit something like that.
Yeah. To that point, I too, because we had that discussion. And again, on how administration would have to craft their agenda to us in regards to the ordinances and, you know, like, for example, this ordinance, we do have the in-between, between first and second reading. So would you have a meeting in between if there needed to be a meeting? So again, these are issues I got to defer and ask you. How would you structure something like that if we wanted to do workshop?
I mean, there are, well, what you're talking about, it sounds like, is having perhaps subcommittees of the council that would meet informally, so something to do with two council members to work on something and then present it to the council at a later time. That's certainly possible to do. There are towns that have a working meeting once a month and a business meeting once a month. I mean, they meet twice, but the first meeting, they don't pass any legislation. That's all done at the second meeting. We've never done that here, ever. It's possible to do, but it does create some problems with respect to timing and so forth. There are a lot of times when in a community like this, that's fairly large and complicated, you need to have pretty quick action in order to get something done for whatever purpose. But look, there's lots of ways that can be done. You can always talk about this stuff. No problem with that. I don't know what position the mayor will take. I mean, we haven't talked about it, but...
And we can all have that conversation with the mayor.
Madam Clerk, I remember when we had this conversation, though, a few years back, though, I believe that Livingston does have a workshop when you're in Livingston.
Four meetings a month.
Four meetings a month.
Two workshop, two public. Oh, wow.
Well, they would, I'm saying...
We're not saying that.
Every Monday.
Particularly with the administration, when there is something that is, you know, taxing, I would say, on all of us, that we better work together.
That's a good word.
It doesn't have to be for everything, but on issues like, you know, this.
I would recommend that the administration make a recommendation to us. I guess when you have your, oh God, it's getting late. When you have your weekly meeting, I guess have a conversation, see if it's feasible or how you would set it up and propose that to us. Because I don't know if it's even feasible to meet if we had to do four meetings in one month, obviously.
It's going to be very difficult to add meetings and continue on the same pace. Because right now, it's pretty bang-bang. You probably don't see that, but for instance, you have a meeting tonight. Starting tomorrow, department heads now have one week to get anything in to the clerk's office for consideration for you, for the next meeting. So we only have a week to put together what you're going to consider at the next meeting. If you're looking, and to add a review in there is going to extend at least another week. And maybe more. So which means you go down to this concept, that the concept of having one meeting as a workshop and the other meeting as
Public.
as a business meeting. And as council said, a lot of towns do that.
My proposal was for when we have things that the administration is going to bring to us, that are going to, you know, take some time to deliberate and to discuss, that we have a working meeting with the administration and not just through email when we get it, you know?
That certainly can be done. I mean, but then again, the question is, you have, as a council, you have to meet to decide that this particular topic needs further discussion, which you could do in the current structure you have now. If, in other words, if the administration puts forward something, you're saying, you know what? We need more time for the X reason. You could say, we're not going to address it tonight. We're going to address it in two weeks, if that's what you choose to do.
No, that I understand. I'm saying, before it's presented to us in the agenda, while these discussions are happening amongst the administration, that the council be brought in to be a part of those discussions.
Well, that's what we have, the president. Yeah, that's what we have.
So, for instance, when the county, and the county executives meet, and that's where I got the frame of reference from, they do have a working meeting with their team when there's a project, and they are voting members. So that's where I got that reference from.
You can't do that with the whole council.
No, that's why I said outside of a quorum.
You can't do it with the whole council.
That's why I initially stated outside of a quorum. I realize that you can't do it with a It's whoever's available, whoever wants to go. It's something that, I mean, those are things that we can Okay. And I get that, but we can decide that later. My discussion with council is looking for support in order to do that and have that conversation with administration.
First off, from, I think we're talking about style, not necessarily substance here. Right now, when a topic comes up, if you individually, or if two council people wants to meet with the administration?
We can.
We meet with the administration, we'll meet with you. So that happens. I mean, that happens
All the time.
The key is to look at your agenda immediately.
No, it's not that we don't.
So that happens right now.
I'm saying, before it gets to us, to this point.
But if it gets, before it gets to you, then how do you pick the topics that you want to see before it gets to you?
Well, if it's going to be a matter of an issue, or controversial, or a big vote, then that should be something that is not just presented the Thursday before the Tuesday council.
Well, only a resolution wouldn't be the immediate vote. If it's an ordinance, then it's on first reading, and then at the first reading, we could designate if we want to do a subcommittee or a work meeting. We'd be able to have time.
Even a resolution, you can table it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you really do have that ability without changing your structure.
No, I do understand that.
You can just table it?
My point about changing the structure is if you change the structure, you're going to prolong the process.
It wasn't about changing the structure.
No, I understand that. I understand that. But that'll be the effect of it.
So if there's a resolution that we see that could be an issue? No, 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 but I get what they're saying too, and I know there are time constraints. So
But you need a majority to make that decision. In other words, if the
I get it.
If the administration's going to propose a resolution and to put on the agenda, and council wants to hold it, you need three people to do that. But you can't get three people till you get to the meeting. You can't convene a committee to make that decision because the committee is only two out of five, and it needs to be three out of five. That's just the former government we're in, and quite frankly, that's most former governments.
Can you email the, yeah, maybe email the, let's think about it.
Saying goodnight? Motion to adjourn?
Can we talk about Ms. Morelli, and maybe, are we in agreement that we should put a sign up on the last row and say, please defer to seniors if they want to sit here?
I think Mrs. Morelli can sit wherever she pleases.
Yeah.
I'd offer my seat.
You can have mine, too.
So in other words, there's no serious intent to consider this. Is that correct?
I would.
I don't understand, like, I don't think that, I don't know what the issue was exactly this evening. I mean, was it about who sat where? Or, that's why I'm confused. I can't see.
You'd have to put that sign that says, "Reserve for persons seeking reasonable accommodations." That's what you have to do.
Well, we have that here, and we have it there. We put that same
Well, we're going to save these seats for certain
Well, I think that's
Especially since the presuming rationale for doing that is because of, there's got to be some reason that you're singling out a group for some kind of special accommodation. And, you know, I don't know that there's any difference in these, you know, I mean, there's obviously, everybody has their own view of comfort, or whatever it is, but you've got to be across the board to everybody.
I don't think you can handpick, like you're saying, seniors, or males, females. It's got to be, that's why we came up with that line, which reserve for persons seeking reasonable accommodations. That applies to everyone.
So why don't you put another plaque down?
So would it be a big deal? Okay. So can we do that?
What's that?
Okay.
There you go.
We went for legal before we put that in. So that's the language you have to use. It applies to everyone. It has to apply in everyone. It can't apply to a one group.
Right.
I will have that, I will have another one at our meeting.
Reech, you can sit wherever she pleases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
However, they're going to have to, do they have to request? How do they?
Second. I thought I heard a motion.
Yeah, let's go home.
Thank you.
The end of May, May 27th is the Memorial Day May 27th, 10 o'clock is the Memorial Day ceremony, gentlemen? I'm going to say it again. May 27th is the Memorial Day ceremony, 10 o'clock here at Town Hall. May 28th, planning board, review of the master plan. So, and our council meeting is moved to Wednesday, May 29th. Thank you.